Data-driven culture through a firestat system that will help empower folks in the fire stations and at the highest levels of management. We're deploying our fire apparatuses and our ambulances with the help of GPS trackers for the first time. We're hiring our first new recruits since 2009 and keeping that momentum going to rebuild the strength of the numbers of this department. And we're also doing that through a reformed system that levels the playing field, making sure that we get the very best firefighters we can.
Right now, the men and women who wear the uniform, who are here with us today, have to lead a department that is funded at a fraction of what departments throughout the country are.
And hopes are that will all change. Tarazas has already been a game changer in the department. He worked on the Proposition F Fire Station Bond, which facilitated the construction of nineteen new LAFD stations. It's a new beginning for an old department, and all eyes are on the new captain to steer the ship in the right direction. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Chief Tarazas also wants to set up a high school fire academy modeled after the high school police academy operated by the Los Angeles Police Department. It could be the end of an almost year-long court battle. City leaders have come up with a possible deal that could encourage the managers of two trusts at the LA Department of Water and Power to allow an audit. Anna Marcos has the details.
A tug-of-war between city leaders and those who manage two worker trusts at the LA Department of Water and Power. At stake, $4 million. The city recently refused to release the money to the Joint Training Institute and the Joint Safety Institute, which oversees safety and training for DWP workers unless the two trusts open up their books.
Anyone who receives public funds, ratepayer funds, must account for the use of those funds.
It is essential to each one of us that every ratepayer dollar be accounted for, that we bring transparency and sunlight. This is nothing less than what the people of Los Angeles deserve.
But now, city council members have come up with a plan that they hope brings a solution. City leaders say they will release the money if more than a dozen conditions are met. Among them, the city must be allowed to audit the trust accounts for the past five years and every year going forward, and DWP managers must be appointed to the boards of the trusts.
We have put in place, if accepted by our partners, that will create the transparency that this city wants, needs, and expects. And also, from a fiscal aspect, that we protect the city's resources, in particular, DWP.
Ratepayer money needs to be accountable.
Brian Darcy, who heads the DWP's union, which oversees the trusts, said in a statement that there is still much work to do, but he is confident that there are solutions. For city leaders, this could be another step on the path to reforming the utility and making it more accessible and transparent to ratepayers. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
City leaders have also been working on an LA-DWP worker contract that saves taxpayers billions of dollars through salary changes and pension reforms. There's a growing concern that more and more TV and film productions are fleeing to other states and countries. That's why the city is giving the red carpet treatment to honor productions that shoot locally. Yana Kay has more.
Sheldon, are these letters from your grandmother?
Don't read those letters.
Oh, look, she calls you "moon pie." That is so cute.
Look at the letters!
CBS sitcom "The Big Bang Theory" is one of the highest-rated and most successful programs on television, and because it's shot locally in Los Angeles, it received special recognition from the city.
Thank you very much for this award and this honor. It's a privilege to work here in Hollywood, and as a producer in charge of post-production, I work right over there on Sunset, and it's just, it's a great place to be.
The proclamation is part of Councilmember Tom Labonge's "Made in Hollywood Honors," a three-year-old program that pays tribute to locally-made Emmy-nominated shows or Oscar-nominated films.
We're the entertainment capital of the world, and we've got to fight with the world now because the world's gone global.
Television industry executives and city officials held the event at 1,600 Vine in Hollywood. The reality dance show "Dancing With the Stars" also received a proclamation, along with a handful of other shows. Several stars were on hand to show their support, such as actress Charlene Tilton, most famous for her role as Lucy Ewing on Dallas.
We employ thousands and thousands and thousands of people and give a product that uplifts, makes people think, and is art and wonderful, and it's important that we keep it here.
A total of thirteen dramas were made in the state this year, largely due to California tax incentives. And if it wasn't for those credits, 2013 and '14 would have been the worst year on record since 2006 for locally-produced dramas. According to a report by Film LA, these tax credits are helping to stem so-called runaway productions to other states and even countries, but they're not enough. And Golden Globe winner actress Diane Cannon can't help but express her frustration.
New York quadruples in tax incentives to what we have here. New York! Why? This is Hollywood. So I would like to see our State Assembly and our legislators get it together. I would like to have Governor Brown sign that bill.
And that bill is AB 1839, which is currently making its way through the state legislature and will hopefully get signed by Governor Jerry Brown.
So far, so good. It's been universally supported, and it's a jobs bill providing incentives that will keep production in the state of California, not just Los Angeles and LA County and Hollywood, but the state of California, and it keeps us competitive with New York.
If the bill passes, officials hope the state will be hearing action more often. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
And since Yana filed the story, a state Senate committee has approved AB 1839, a $400 million film tax incentive which rivals New York's. The bill is headed to the Senate floor. The world's largest rubber duck is about to make her debut in LA at the port, but as LA prepares for her arrival, Anna Marcos gets a preview peek at her smaller prototype.
Just about everybody who sees the big rubber duck on the City Hall steps wants to pose with the duck, touch the duck, and hug the duck.
Ooh, the yellow little duck.
There are councilmembers hobnobbing with the duck, photographers taking pictures of other photogs posing with the duck, duck lovers with duck-colored lenses, little duck lovers, big duck lovers, people taking selfies, people posting pics with a duck. So why the fuss over the yellow critter?
Do you like rubber duckies?
Uh-huh.
Tell me why you like rubber duckies.
Rubber duckies is beautiful.
My brother and I, we'd just play in the bath, play with these little ducks, and they're actually yellow, just like this one, too.
The rubber duck is making the rounds in LA, in places like the zoo and the observatory, along with City Hall. He's been all around the world, but he is just a tease for the big Mama Duck, which will make her debut on the West Coast August 20th for San Pedro's Tall Ships Festival.
This little duck will serve a magnet to encourage people across the city, across the region, to visit our new LA waterfront.
There are thirteen tall ships coming in, but led by the world's biggest duck.
The world's biggest rubber duck was the brainchild of Dutch artist Florentine Hoffman. He commissions different artists to make look-alike ducks, which have debuted in places like France, Beijing, Hong Kong, London, Australia, and Pittsburgh.
When I heard about this, I said, "What the duck? I'm gonna be here and support this."
Wow! This little baby monster is ten feet tall, but we hear the mother duck is, what? Ninety feet? That's like six stories!
It's a symbol of hope, prosperity. Put all politics aside, a symbol of love, that we're bringing people together.
And yes, even reporters can catch big rubber duck fever. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
And that takes us to this week in tweets. With so many selfies taken, the baby rubber duck is getting a taste of what it's like to be a celebrity here in Tinseltown. One mom named Gloria posted this photo of her cute kids jumping for joy in front of the duck at City Hall. She writes, "Can't wait to see Mama Duck. Pick us for the free tickets, please." As Anna Marcos mentioned, that's in reference to the Tall Ships Festival at the Port of Los Angeles beginning August 20th, where the large mother duck will be leading the procession of tall ships coming into the port. And the Tall Ship Festival's official Twitter account posted this photo of Baby Duck rocking it in Hollywood, posing for photos with the public in front of the Hollywood sign at the Griffith Observatory. Here's a close-up tweeted by LA Waterfront's Twitter account. Baby Duck also made a special trip to the Children's Hospital in Orange County to visit with young patients. If you'd like to find out more about the Tall Ships Festival, we'll have details in our Things to Do segment coming up. And for ducks of a different sort, as we all know, the Anaheim Ducks did not win the Stanley Cup this year, the LA Kings did. And so it was time for Anaheim's mayor to pay up after losing a wager to Mayor Eric Garcetti, and it all went down along the LA River.
Good morning, everybody! Go Kings, go!
A morning greeting with a side of gloating. Mayor Eric Garcetti didn't waste any time as volunteers and city leaders gathered around him along the Elysian Valley portion of the LA River, where he collected on his LA Kings versus Anaheim Ducks bet against Anaheim Mayor Tom Tate.
Now, when I made a bet with Mayor Tate, we said, "Let's not just make the same old food bet." And besides, the food between Anaheim and LA isn't that different. We're just gonna be betting different tacos from each place. So let's talk about work that we're doing in our city and bet a community service project. We want to restore pride in an LA treasure in the same way that we've restored pride in the LA Kings.
And with that said, a trash pickup along the river commenced with the help of community organizations, including Aztec Rising and Friends of the LA River.
I just want to remind everybody that we're part of a larger community. It's not just the two-legged ones, but the four-legged ones, and the flying ones, and the swimming ones, that are all part of this community that you've pledged to clean up today.
As promised, Mayor Tate rolled up his sleeves and proved he was no sore loser, saying the day even inspired him.
We have the Santa River, and it could be equally as beautiful, and the idea of kayaking down the Santa River, that gave me an idea. And the idea of restoring it, like, I know your plans, you've got great plans, and it's gonna be spectacular.
I want to thank the LA Kings for winning the Stanley Cup, and I want to thank our visitors from Anaheim and Orange County because the Kings have torn down the orange curtain, right? We're more seamless now than ever.
And it was a day of goodwill and good news. Mayor Garcetti announced Northeast Trees just received a $30,000 grant to begin planting trees along the river in Elysian Valley, further helping to bring life back to the LA River.
And we saved this photo for last. Craig Samborsky of the Tall Ships Festival shared this picture of Mayor Garcetti and Tate with Bailey at the LA River cleanup, posing with the baby rubber duck. And it's not just the river that's getting a sprucing up. The Great Wall of Los Angeles mural has been a big attraction for visitors over the years, but it was looking a bit worse for wear. Anna Marcos takes us to the annual cleanup for the iconic mural.
A bubble bath for the longest mural wall in the world isn't exactly like your typical bath time. We are talking high-velocity water spray and a special earth-friendly solvent to cut through all that chemical pollution, fertilizer, and grease. But yes, the Great Wall of Los Angeles is due for a shower.
It's an annual effort to preserve this largest monument to interracial harmony in America.
The Great Wall of Los Angeles was created in 1976 in a neglected ditch in the Tejanga Wash that had become an eyesore. More than 400 students, artists, and residents, along with a group called Spark, the Social and Public Art Resource Center, turned the ditch into a work of art and source of local history over the course of five summers. Then, three years ago, the artwork, which is often inundated by water from the LA River, was fully restored.
It's come up as high as four feet from the top, but believe it or not, the water is not the biggest, you know, doesn't give the biggest damage to the mural. It's mostly chemicals and pollution, chemicals that are applied onto the top of the landscape above us, the Tejanga Green Belt.
But the 2,754 feet of mural art is about to grow longer.
Believe it or not, the mural is not finished. The mural will be a mile long when it's completed. We've just received funding from the National Endowment of the Arts to begin the design of the next segments of the work, the 1960 section.
Eventually, the mural will be expanded to depict the local life and racial diversity of LA through the 19th century, so anything before the year 2000 will now go down as history and art. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
At LAUSD, the new school year has begun, and hundreds of students are going to class ready-to-learn, thanks to generous donations of much-needed school supplies. Yana Kay reports.
Carrying brand-new backpacks, these kids are all set for the new school year.
I'm here for to get backpacks and have fun.
The Dream Center, which helps families in need, recently hosted its annual Back-to-School Bash in Echo Park, a fun-filled event that distributes thousands of free backpacks to families from at-risk communities such as Lincoln Heights, South LA, and Watts.
They got backpacks with all the materials they need: notepads, pencils, crayons, everything they need to go back to school.
And hundreds of families lined up to make sure they didn't miss the opportunity to receive those school supplies, and especially the backpack.
I'm gonna use it for school.
Councilmember Mitchell Farrell was on hand, passing out backpacks and doing his part to make sure no child left empty-handed.
There's everything in here that a child needs to study and to have all the supplies they need so they can focus on academics at school.
Families also enjoyed lots of other fun activities, such as a zoo, inflatable jumpers, arts and crafts, and plenty of games. And while the kids had fun, parents were thankful for the supplies.
I think that it's great because it's helped us as parents to provide for our kids to get ready to school.
And as the new school year gets underway, these students now have all they need to succeed. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
The Dream Center says it plans to give out 2,000 backpacks this year. A shuttle service to the Hollywood sign viewing area extends to the end of the year. An old fire station gets a second life as a community park, and residents say no more to cars-for-sale parked along their streets. These stories and more in City Beat. What started out as a three-month promotional shuttle service to the Hollywood sign viewing area is being extended until the end of the year due to its popularity. A joint effort of the Department of Brecken Parks and Councilmember Tom Labonge, the shuttle service will be operating every Saturday and Sunday, including holidays, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM at a cost of $10 per person. In addition to the Hollywood sign, the shuttle service will also take riders to premier hiking trails on Mount Hollywood Drive and the Griffith Observatory. For more information and to purchase tickets, go to la parks dot org. The Department of Recreation and Parks recently broke ground at what was Old Fire Station 84 for the construction of a new community park. The old fire station is located at the corner of Canoga Avenue and Costanzo Street in Councilman Bob Blumenfield's district. The decommissioned, single-story fire station was built in 1949 and served the community for almost 50 years, when operations were relocated to a new facility in 2007. Community meetings were held and residents consulted before the decision was made to build the park at the quarter-acre property. As a nod to its history, the new park will feature a fire station-themed play area. The city recently celebrated the opening of its latest universally-accessible playground at the Fernandez Recreation Center in Sun Valley. The new inclusive playground with an agricultural theme, designed by Shane's Inspiration, features a play area that integrates fun farm elements like a bright red barn and a green tractor. The project is part of a collaborative venture between the Department of Brecken Parks, First Five LA, and Shane's Inspiration to increase the number of accessible playgrounds in the city. Councilmember Nury Martinez is calling for the elimination of cars-for-sale parked on residential streets in Arlita, saying it's a quality-of-life issue for area residents. Martinez has introduced a motion to ban individuals from advertising and selling personal cars on certain streets in Arlita. This after residents reported a growing number of cars consistently parking on Van Nuys Boulevard and Woodman Avenue for the sole purpose of displaying them for private sale. Residents said those cars monopolize on-street parking, produce motor oil leaks, and are a source of visual blight in their neighborhoods. The issue still needs to be taken up by the full city council. In this week's list of things to do, the Tall Ships Festival at the Port of LA, a free Shakespeare festival at Griffith Park, and a unique art exhibit featuring the works of artists with disabilities. You can come visit the world's largest rubber duck, but the main event will be the Tall Ships Festival at the Port of Los Angeles, starting on Wednesday, August 20th through Sunday, August 24th. The festival will feature more than a dozen international and domestic grand tall ships from all over the Pacific Ocean. For five days, the Port of Los Angeles, just one of three West Coast ports bestowed with the honor of welcoming these beautiful vessels to their shores, will be affording visitors the rare chance to catch a glimpse, step aboard, and even set sail on some of the grandest ships of yore. You can find a schedule of events and purchase tickets at tallshipsfestivalla.com. This summer, visit a small Italian provincial 1950s town when independent Shakespeare Company brings a bit of La Dolce Vita as it presents its take on one of Shakespeare's most loved comedies, "The Taming of the True." It's all part of the Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival. The next Saturday show will be on August 23rd from 7:00 to 10:00 PM at the Old Zoo in Griffith Park, located at 4730 Crystal Springs Drive. Bring a blanket or a low-back chair and dress warmly. For more information, go toiscla.org. The Chinese-American Museum, located at the Old Pueblo Historical Monument, has a new exhibit called "Trans-Pacific Ties: Bridging Hong Kong and Los Angeles Through Art" that will run through mid-December. The exhibit, comprised of the works of more than 40 artists with disabilities, emphasizes the talents of two groups separated by the Pacific Ocean but united in their shared passion for art. The Chinese-American Museum is located at 425 North Los Angeles Street. More info can be found at camla.org. LA This Week will take you inside the exhibit in an upcoming episode, and that's a look at some upcoming things to do. As we showed you earlier, the city continues to clean up and improve the LA River, but it's not all work and no play on the river. Our own Rasha Goel decided to get adventurous and took along videographer Casey Chung for a kayaking trip.
Ever thought of kayaking on the LA River? Well, I have, and I finally decided to give it a try for the first time. And what better tour guide to have than Bruce Saito, executive director of the LA Conservation Corps. The Paddle the LA River program gives people a taste of the history and beauty of a river that is considered a vital part of the city.
The intention idea was, one, provide recreation for all Angelinos and Montanans and visitors as well, but also to provide a greater awareness and education to the LA River.
The LA Conservation Corps, a nonprofit that provides at-risk youth and young adults with job skills, training, and work experience, is providing this awareness with their guided kayak tours along the 1.5-mile natural bottom stretch of the LA River. In the past, I had reported on this program from dry land, but getting into the kayak myself allowed me to truly appreciate the LA River.
The tour is set at two different locations, so if you're looking for something a little bit more calm and relaxed, you can come down to the Sepulveda Basin. But if you're up for a challenge and maybe for some rapids, then you could head down to Elysian Valley. I think I'm gonna stick with the calm and relaxed.
It's all part of the LA River Revitalization Plan to transform the neglected waterway into a 51-mile greenway with a bike path, parks, public art, and waterfront businesses. Recently, a $1 billion restoration effort to fix an 11-mile section of the river from Glendale to downtown LA was slated, thanks to an agreement between the city and the federal government.
Besides maintaining and enhancing these green and open spaces, there's gotta be a balanced approach to it, so there's gonna be some development, well-thought-out and planned development.
Coming down to the LA River has been an eye-opener for some.
I loved it. It was very safe and very quiet and very pretty. You wouldn't think that the LA River would actually be pretty, but it is.
It was really fun kind of seeing that the LA River isn't as gross as everybody thinks it is.
And of course, one wouldn't know until they get their feet wet. In Balboa Park, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Kayak tours are offered four days a week and will run until mid-September. For pricing and other information, check out paddletheleariver.org. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at la city view dot org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We leave you now with more of the LA River.
One of the Los Angeles Unified School District's priorities is to provide every student with the chance to learn in a safe and nurturing environment.
We are teaching our employees, our students, and their families how to use technology safely and how to avoid becoming victims of cyber criminals.
We are engaging in public service announcements, like this one, to make sure everyone knows we take safety seriously and that we will do everything we can to protect our students.
With modern tools, we can lock devices, making sure they are used for educational purposes only.
We can freeze or disable devices if they fall into the wrong hands, and we can track them so we know precisely where they are if they go missing.
We are partnering with law enforcement agencies and other community leaders across Southern California, working together for the protection of our students.
After all...
It's their education.
Let's secure it. California is earthquake country. We're all in this together.
Hi, I'm Craig Erwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Erwin, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, Power City
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Uh, it's Tuesday. Shhh. It's Tuesday, August 19th. I want to welcome each and every one of you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This meeting meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. All are welcome. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Carezca, Coria, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Wesson. Thirteen members present. Acorn, Mr. President.
Okay, Buscaino, I mean, next order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Buscaino moves, Bonin seconds, next.
Committee resolutions for approval.
Parks moves, Price seconds, next. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Could I ask everyone in the chambers to please rise? We have a very, very special guest with us today, one of us, Congresswoman Janice Hahn. If she's at Mr. Labange's chair, and Congresswoman Hahn is going to lead us in today's pledge.
Thank you. Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Laban seems to be overly excited today. So we are very glad that you're here, Janice. You might keep him busy today. All right, Madam Clerk, why don't we proceed and go through today's agenda?
First, Mr. President, there's requests to continue Item 1F and I to September 9th and Item 1H to August 29th.
Without objection. Without objection. That brings us...
And also, there's requests to continue Item 38 until September 9th.
Fine, without objection as well.
Item 1 is an item known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that Items 1A and G may be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid.
Okay, so ordered. So do we have cards on this item?
Yes, there's cards.
Okay, then let's hold it and move on to items, I believe we'll be at 2 through 29.
Yes, Items 2 through 29 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, so I'll look to the members. Mr. Caretz? Mr. Caretz?
I'd like to call Item 10 special.
Okay, we'll hold Item 10. Mr. Ofero, was it Item 2 for you?
Yes, please.
Mr. Sadio. 7 for Mr. Sadio. Mr. Englander. I didn't hear you, sir.
3 and 4.
3 and 4 for Mr. Englander. Okay, Madam Clerk, this prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Buscaino.
I have some forthwith items, Mr. President, for the Port of Los Angeles. Items 8, 14, 15, and 16, please.
Without objection, that's the order. So what's the next section, Madam Clerk?
Items 30 through 37 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Mr. Buscaino.
Item 35, please.
35 for Mr. Buscaino. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on Items 30, 31, 32, 33, 36, and 37.
So is there anything left?
Yes, Item 34.
So we will vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings Council to presentations or items called special.
Okay, if I could get Mr. Labange. And Mr. Sadio, if you would meet me at the center aisle.
Please welcome the President of the City Council, Mr. Herb Wesson, and Councilman of the 1st District, Mr. Sadio, for special presentation.
Hey, everybody. Good morning, good morning. Thank you, Mr. President and members. And so before we begin, we're going to wait for a little television coverage, just like that. Good job, IT. So if I could ask our special guests, Mr. Sadio's my special guest, Norma and your family, please come up. Please, come on, don't be shy.
Thank you.
Raul. Members, I am very honored to represent probably one of the diverse, the most diverse districts in the city of Los Angeles. In fact, when I look at the district that I represent, it reminds me of the United Nations Building or whatever. We are so diverse. So when I was approached by Raul, which is Raul area, this young man here is a leader in the El Salvadorian community. To recognize a very fantastic woman, I jumped at the opportunity, and I'm very proud that Mr. Sadio stands with me today because it's my understanding there's a personal relationship of sorts between Norma and Mr. Sadio. But what I have for you today, a journalist of all journalists, Norma Roque, who, if you are engaged in any Spanish-speaking television, you see that her name, she comes up on a regular basis. She's had a career that has spanned over 26 years, and she's a member or has been a member of the award-winning news team at Univision's K-Max Channel 35. You see her at 6:00 p.m., you see her at 11:00. Excuse me, Norma. Shhh. Mr. President?
Cut it.
Thank you, sir.
Sergeant?
I don't want to do it from here, but I will. Anyway, we bring to you an individual whose talents have not gone unnoticed. We have an individual who has been recognized with several awards throughout her career. She has received two Emmy Awards, one for Best Investigative Report, the other for Best Report of a Human Interest Story of sorts. Two other Emmys, if I have this correct, one for being a live reporter and the other for being part of, number one, news team. She has won three Golden Mikes and has been recognized by several entities within the state of California. Since we do have a special visitor with us today, Congresswoman Janice Hahn, Norma was honored by the United States Congress. She was honored by the California State Assembly, by the County of Los Angeles, the State of California's Department of Social Services, the Northern California Hospital Council, the California Chamber of Commerce of El Salvador, and many others. Prior to joining Channel 34, she was affiliated with one of their stations in Fresno. So I would have to say Fresno's loss is definitely our gain. So we are happy to have had you here for so many years. She is a native of Santa Ana, El Salvador. She attended Cal State University, L.A., where she received a degree in journalism in 1989. She's also an active member of the Association of Hispanic Journalists, California Chicano News Media Associations, and the International Society of Salvadorian Women. She has been here with us for many years. Many people go to bed watching her on television. She's known for being a very honest and truthful journalist, not an "I got you" type of person. And I am truly honored that she's beloved, but really by the El Salvadorian community in the district that I represent. So if you could please, everybody, give Norma Roque a round of applause. She deserves it. I would now like to ask Mr. Sadio to come up and properly roll Rs and all of the things that I butchered, but I have a contest with Mr. Sadio. And Mr. Sadio, I will be back, and I'll be able to roll a R, too. Gilbert Sadio.
Thank you, sir. What an honor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Thank you.
Norma Roque is a giant. You know, all of us get our news from various sources, and those who watch television, ABC, CBS, NBC, CNN, MSNBC, whatever your source, I want you to think about their magnitude, their reach. This is very important to us as policymakers, important for us to communicate. But you have to appreciate that Univision is the largest broadcasting network in North America. Not the largest Spanish-speaking, but the largest broadcasting network in North America. It is the largest. It has the broadest range, most viewers. And then particularly, when you think about news in Los Angeles, the primetime news and its reach and its breadth, you're looking here at someone who's bigger than anybody that you can imagine. Think of any newscaster. Think of the big hullabaloo that was made when Katie Couric was leaving and someone else was going to replace her. Norma's bigger than her. Much bigger than her. You think of Barbara Walters and her talk show, and is she going to be on and not be on? Norma's bigger than her. More people, as the President said, go to bed listening to her. She's a voice of integrity. She's a voice of truth. We have a special relationship because we've worked so long on so many issues important to the Spanish-speaking community. The dream... to the Spanish-speaking community, the Dream Act, the driver's license, and they've relied on her to tell them where we were at that particular moment. On all the issues of the day, news and public policy, it's Norma's voice and Norma's word that they rely on. And so I want you all to appreciate the significance of this moment, to have one of the most important voices in public policy in North America standing here with us. She is a giant. Que gusto, Norma. Un placer. Norma Roque, la reina del Salvador. Yes. The boss.
Gracias, gracias.
And if I could do the honor, but also, and if I remember correctly, Miguel, that's your husband. Everybody just give Miguel a round of applause. It's got to be tough, given the schedule that you work. But anyway, I'd like to present you with this resolution from the greatest city on the planet, Los Angeles. It is signed by every member on this council and the mayor of the city of Los Angeles. Just give a round of applause for Norma Roque.
Thank you.
Would you please share a few words?
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. This is what an honor. As a reporter, good morning, everyone. I'm just so happy to be here. I'm so emotional. As a reporter, I'm usually in the back, in that little room, chasing the council members. And I don't think there is one here that I have not interviewed and have not, I will, I hope. I remember Mr. Ofero, of course, Mr. Wezar Fuentes, Mr. Sadio, of course. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you from the bottom of my heart to the LA City President, Herb Wesson Jr., thank you so much.
Thank you.
To the Mayor Garcetti, of course, to every member of these council chambers of the most beautiful city in the world, after my city in El Salvador, Santana. Only Santana is more beautiful than Los Angeles. But Los Angeles is such a jewel in the world and the diversity. I'm just so proud to work here for our communities. Thank you, Mr. Oscar Dominguez, Raul Claros, Araceli Mejia, and Sonia Saldiva from the Salvadorian corridor. Thank you, thank you very much to El Salvador corridor and the Latino coalition of Los Angeles MAC. Thank you, thank you to my husband, Miguel Medina, my best friend, my best teacher, my mentor, my everything, my best chef and everything else. Thank you, my love. Thank you for making us here together in this beautiful city. Thank you, thank you again to Mr. Herb Wesson, Mr. Sadio, thank you, thank you for always being there for the Latin American community, for the Salvadorian and the Mexican community, in every community. This honor makes me want to work at least 25 more years as a journalist, at least 25 more years. And it's a commitment to work not only for the Salvadorian, Central American, and Mexican community, all the Latin American community, but the Afro-American community as well, the Anglo community, the Armenian community, the Jewish community, all these beautiful communities that make Los Angeles such a very special place. I am here to help you, help your voice be heard, not to be your voice, but because you have your own beautiful voice, but to have your voice heard with the council members and in the country. Muchisimas gracias, que honor estar en este lugar tan bello. Muchas gracias. I feel humbled, it's an honor. Thank you again from the bottom of my heart. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you very much, Norma. Mr. Sadio, Mr. Wesson.
Gracias, Mr. Sadio, thank you.
Mr. Wezar. Norma.
Mr. President, I just quickly wanted to add my voice to this recognition. And Norma, when I first met you at the school district, you know, it's important to have reporters like you that really understand the issues, understand communities, and understand the parents. And I remember you going there and taking every story with such care, but you really understood the nuances of what was going on because of, you know, after all, the school district's over 70% Latino with parents, the majority of them don't speak English, but you were able to communicate with them to get a fair, objective story out. And I remember that from many years ago, and you continue to do that. This recognition, Mr. President, Mr. Sadio, is well deserved. Felicidades.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your kind words. Gracias. Thank you all. Thank you.
Good, good. Congratulations.
Gracias.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, what I'd like to take is number 30 out of order, if I could, please. 30, it's the appointment of the Commissioner for the Department of Water and Power, and Mr. Fuentes, would you call that in, Madam Clerk?
Item 30 called special for cards.
Okay, yeah, we're going to start.
Come up to the center table, please, so that we can get a good look at you, Mr. Levine. Colleagues, I'm very excited about this reappointment. We've had the opportunity to work together now at the Department of Water and Power to try to undo some of the challenges that the utility has been facing, some that we know have been political in nature, but a lot of it sort of structural and the infrastructure of the utility. We've had some catastrophic incidents with the system, which speaks to, I think, the real need to make sure that we are not deferring any additional maintenance into the future, but having a steady hand on how it is that the utility functions and budgets its very valuable resources, all tempered with the need for us to be mindful and cognizant of the ratepayer. And I'm proud to say that Commissioner Levine, Congressmember Levine, has done a tremendous job at the helm for the very short time that he has been Chair of the Board, and I'm very excited about his willingness to continue his stewardship to the city of Los Angeles in this capacity, and I recommend, colleagues, that we emphatically support this candidate and reaffirm his appointment to the Department of Water and Power Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. I have one card, Dr. Tom Williams, followed by John Walsh.
Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, DWP liaison, and Sierra Club Water Committee. We highly recommend this appointment. However, give him a mandate to really delve into the structure. Only last month did we receive an organization chart for this $7 billion revenue organization with over 9,000 employees, and we have a whole bunch of things that are dealing with the problems of accountability. How can you have anyone accountable if there's no organization? So the structure should be a mandate that the President Chairman of the Board of DWP should take on and fully implement. We won't discuss the 300-year replacement cycle for water pipe. Thank you.
John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You, we deserve an apology. You're the boss. You're in charge of the Water Commission. You didn't know that that pipe at UCLA had a D.
Mr. Walsh, could you address the council, please, Mr. Levine?
Give me.
Okay.
It got a D. It got a D, and it wasn't even on the long, long list for repairs. Who's responsible for the UCLA flood? Nobody? No. Mr. Mel Levine, Levine, Lavinny, whatever he wants to say is responsible. This is a chance to apologize, and I'm telling you right now, that's just the first big rupture. The worst flood in the history of the world destroyed a university, and now you're going to give him a 15 to nothing boost, a vote of confidence. And that's why I say to everybody who's watching us all over the United States, stay away from this city. It's on a death trip. And we're sorry, Mr. Levine, Mr. Levine, that you're not still in Congress. You decided to run against a nobody named Barbara Boxer. The Waxman-Berman machine said that he was going to win, and he lost his congressional seat. You'd be a big leader in Congress now instead of what you are. I'm telling you right now, a D, the UCLA flood, this man is responsible. The buck starts at the DW Commissioner, as the head of the DW Commissioner, and it ends there. And now you're going to reward him with a job. And when is the next, when will the next 1920, 1919, 1918 pipe burst? Remember, if it happens in a Hispanic or black community, they don't give a damn. But when it happens where rich white people live, like Mr. Levine, it's a big deal. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Juan Acala.
On the positive note to what Mr. Welch was saying, I saw a lot of people swimming, having fun at the campus for a change, a day off, no more academia for the day. You know, it was kind of cool to have a pipe burst in the middle of a university. People were having fun for a change.
Speak to the appointment, please, Mr. Acala.
Well, are you a good guy, or would you say you had nothing to do with the pipe bursting? See, he wasn't even there in 1920, so what the hell? Let him be.
Mr. Herman.
Ms. Hahn, welcome back to California. But let's take this special recommendation for reappointment of Mr. Mel Levine. Does Mr. Mel Levine have the potential? Does Mr. Levine have the potential for reappointment? That's the topic of conversation here, Mr. Lavine. So I'm going out to topic as Batman, who knows everything that goes on Los Angeles, is log on to HollywoodHighland.org and listen to the crisis, the catastrophic disaster of old pipes by DWP and the other agencies involved for not repairing infrastructure. So Ms. Hahn, when you go back to Congress, remind, remind them that the infrastructure in the state of California is a disaster. Not only do we need more funds, we need people who can take action representing us, not like Mr. Peppa Pig or somebody else from Nickelodeon over here who cannot handle the job. So because of Mr. Levine's reappointment, I'm sure all of you taxpayers will agree, does he have the potential? Any comment, Mr. Levine? No, thank you. Welcome to California. Welcome to LA. Batman demands action.
The Speaker should address the council only.
Fix our streets. And again, we need water, not droughts. We need water, not droughts. I'm against the bond for more water. Jerry Brown, take it back, step back. You're still in LA, buddy, and if you don't got the formula, the measure of what?
You need to stay on topic, sir.
Integrity. Then I say to you, city attorney, get in the ball and work with our governor to fix the problems of broken pipes in Los Angeles. Aye?
To complete the public comment, Mr. Fuentes to close.
Thank you, Mr. Lavine. Colleagues, Mr. Levine's, Commission President Levine's record is unprecedented. His leadership in the legislature, in Congress, conservation, renewable energy, incredibly important to this utility, which is amongst the largest in the country, as you know. And we are pivoting from a gray stack to a green stack economy. This is the fundamental part to that success, colleagues. This utility is a cornerstone with its ability to deliver clean, safe, reliable water and power. It's the cornerstone to our economy. So, Mr. Levine, in my close, I just wanted to hear from you as what you see on the horizon here for the utility, some of the important issues that we need to be monitoring, watching, and planning for, and innovation that you think that we can bring to bear to the utility.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, members. First of all, I very much appreciate your gracious and generous comments, Mr. Chairman. And on a personal note, I should say that I feel very privileged to serve the city of Los Angeles in this capacity. When I was asked if I would be interested in serving on the DWP Commission, I shared with the mayor that I had not had experience in this area recently. I had some sort of 50,000-foot level experience many years ago, both in Congress and in the state legislature, and it would be a learning experience, and in fact, it has been. The DWP is a magnificent agency. It has a storied history. It has a fabulous workforce, and as the chairman notes, it has an extraordinarily important set of missions, both on the water side and on the power side. It is the largest municipal utility in the country, and it does, really, it does a remarkable job. Obviously, there are a number of challenges before the commission, some of which we have seen recently, the UCLA accident is among those. We do need to be more focused on infrastructure. We do need to do what we can in order to deal with what is an aging infrastructure, both on the water side and on the power side. Having said that, our agency is in better shape, our utility is in better shape than most of those around the country. That's not a high bar, but we should put it in perspective. They have a series of challenges because of the quantity, as well as the age of the infrastructure on the water side and on the power side, and we need to be very vigilant with regard to it. Mr. Chairman, you're right, we're in a period of transition. We're in a period of transition from the more traditional power sources, coal in particular, moving toward, as aggressively as we can, renewable resources. The Board of Commissioners, in a recent meeting, increased by 50% our energy efficiency targets from 10% to 15%. It's a target that we can meet. It's challenging, and it's consistent with doing everything we can to move toward renewables. We're also committed to doing everything we can on the renewable side. Our mayor is committed to the reform of the DWP. He's committed to making DWP the most responsive and capable utility in the country, and I believe that we've made some initial steps along those lines. We are also very privileged to have now a marvelous general manager. I happened to see her over your shoulder. When General Manager Nichols retired shortly after the new board members were sworn in a little less than a year ago, and shortly after I had been elected as President of the Board, we were very, very worried about our ability to find a capable general manager. I was asked to be part of the team that looked for a replacement for Mr. Nichols, and I found that as I reached out to a diverse variety of sources in a variety of different communities, the one name that kept coming up was Marcy Edwards. I was told by a number of people that I respect in a range of different areas that if we could get Marcy Edwards to be our general manager, we could not do better. And in fact, we have Marcy Edwards. She's been here a relatively short time, six or eight months. I don't know exactly the number of months, but she has done, how many months? Five. Seems like six or eight. She's already established herself. She's so well-regarded from the inside, where she spent some 25 years working her way up the ladder at the Department of Water and Power, and she's very respected from the outside, having been both the utility head and subsequently the city manager in Anaheim. So I believe we've got a very good team in place as we move toward as much of a renewable system as we possibly can, and at the same time, keep focused on making sure that we keep the lights on and we keep the water running. I can commit to you, Mr. Chairman, that we are determined to do everything we can to turn the DWP around, to deal with the major challenges we have, and to make it, once again, a standard for the rest of the country to look up to, and something that will reflect the leadership that the city of Los Angeles justly deserves around the country, not only for utility success, but more broadly.
Very good. Thank you, Commission President. Colleagues, it's clear to me at the helm, we've got a governance structure that is in capable hands. We've got a management in Ms. Edwards that's going to be tremendous for this utility, and of course, the thousands that are in the rank and file spell for a very good recipe for success here. Colleagues, I urge an aye vote.
Very good, and Mr. Sadio puts his button. Can we stand, Mr. Sadio, at the City Council? Okay, you're not in Sacramento. Okay, you're not in Sacramento anymore. Don't try that.
I'm still getting used to this. Are we standing? Are we sitting? Are we standing? You bring incredibly, incredible sage experience, a rich resume of doing things, working with all people from different points of views. Mr. Fuentes said it best, we are in capable hands. At the end of your tenure, what would be the one thing you would like to accomplish at the agency?
I think I'd like to accomplish two things, and it would obviously be something that wouldn't just be me, it would be the board, it would be the staff, it would be the leadership. Frankly, one thing is I'd like to see DWP removed from politics. I would like DWP to be focused on the merits of the issues that are before it and not in the middle of political fights in the city of Los Angeles. And secondly, I'd like to see the DWP restored to the luster that it deserves as the top utility in terms of responsiveness, rate sensitivity, and environmental leadership at the top of those areas throughout the country.
Mr. President, I join my colleague in seconding the motion.
Thank you. So ordered. That being said, you're complete, Mr. Sedia?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Let's, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll on this. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner. And Commissioner, may I say, from the John Ferraro Chambers, as you as a member of Congress, Councilmember Ferraro, the President of the Council, always had great respect for you and your service to this country. Congratulations on your reappointment.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Next item will be 35.
Item 35, called special by Councilmember Buscayino, substitute resolution has been circulated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this item before you deals with Congresswoman Hahn's National Freight Trust Fund Act, and she was introduced earlier. Congresswoman, thank you for being here to speak on this item. Since your arrival, the United States Congress, please sit, yes. You have been a champion, not only for the people in your congressional district, but also have raised awareness of our incredible asset that we have here, local, regional, national asset, the Port of Los Angeles. Leading the effort in forming the first port caucus that you have championed and brought in members on both sides of the aisle, brought in members to speak on the awareness of how much of a national impact ports across the country have. But this specific bill that you've introduced is, you know, that's the Janice in you that we missed seeing here, is just fighting for what's right, especially when it comes to dollars that we send elsewhere across the nation into other ports. Colleagues, as you've heard me say, the Port of Los Angeles is the largest port in the country, handling almost 8 million containers a year. However, the Port of Los Angeles is far from the final destination for the goods of these containers. They are loaded onto the trains and trucks that are shipped all over Southern California and the United States. And in order for the Port of Los Angeles to remain competitive, in order for our ports to remain the number-one port, our shippers, for shippers to send goods going to California, to the southwestern states, and even to Chicago and the Midwest, the country must invest in its freight network. And this is what our Congresswoman is fighting for. This bill will create a direct funding source that would fund improvements for railways and roads, which show the greatest need to improving for the movement of freight and goods across the United States. It'll also help ensure that cargo be shipped in the most efficient way. And as we know, the most efficient way to ship cargo, the cleaner and quickest way is through rail. And as I said, the Port of LA handles the greatest number of containers of any port in the United States, and I'd like to encourage Congress, through your leadership, Congresswoman, to include a strong return-to-source provision that will ensure that the Port of Los Angeles gets its fair share of funding. And with that, if I may, colleagues, turn it over to the author of this trust fund, Congresswoman Janice Hahn, to say a few words.
Thank you very much.
Can you get that straightened out? You never had that happen before.
Thank you very much, Council President Herb Wesson, Assistant Pro Tem, Mr. Labonge. Members of the City Council, Joe Buscayino, thank you for your leadership, and thank you for queuing my time up here before you. Thanks for allowing me to come before you and speak. Boy, it's great to be back in these beautiful City Hall chambers. It doesn't seem like it's been any time since I've left. I will tell you, I miss being with all of you, and I still watch you all the time, and I appreciate every one of your passion and your enthusiasm for your districts and getting things done. I'm here today to speak regarding the resolution that's being taken up by the City Council that supports my legislation, HR 5101, and it's entitled "The National Freight Network Trust Fund Act of 2014." You know, my primary role in Congress for the last three years has been to bring greater attention to America's ports, particularly the Port of Los Angeles, the Port of Long Beach, which are America's port, as economic engines and job creators in this region. From the first day I was in Congress, I decided that I needed to raise the level of awareness among my colleagues about what ports mean in this country and why it matters to our economy, to commerce, to job creation. And it's time now to ensure that our port cities, who many of them pay alone for the wear and tear on our infrastructure, that you get the support you need. And today, I chair, as Joe said, the Congressional Port Caucus. So I have about 91 members of Congress, Republicans and Democrats, some of them don't even have a port, and they've joined my caucus as we begin to focus on legislation that will help our ports. We've changed policy to increase funding for the Port of Los Angeles. Just last month, my bipartisan amendment passed the House overwhelmingly to increase funding to our ports next year by $57 million. So I'm making headway, but our nation, as we talked about this morning, suffers from an infrastructure crisis. And if we want to remain competitive globally, goods movement is our ticket to our nation's economic success. And I introduced HR 5101 for a long-term fix that will create a dedicated funding source for our freight infrastructure. Congress has been fighting to replenish our Highway Trust Fund, which is also important to Los Angeles. We passed a short-term fix that will get us through the end of the year, but that also needs to be funded so that you can count on money for many of our roads and streets and transportation projects. But in the meantime, I decided to find a way to just fund our freight infrastructure. And this bill suggests that we take 5% of the Customs and Border Protection import fees, duties fees, that come into our port and place them directly in the Freight Network Trust Fund. This dedicated Freight Network Trust Fund will help fund your critical infrastructure projects like dedicated truck lanes on our highways, better bridges, on-dock rail, the last mile that comes into our ports, railway-highway grade separations, freight corridors, the most-used routes for our freight here and across the country would be eligible for this funding. This is the best part about this. This trust fund will be at no new cost to businesses, no new taxes, and will infuse nearly $2 billion annually back into our economy every year. It will create good-paying American jobs and keep our nation's ports strong and globally competitive, along with the cities that surround our ports. I hope this council will consider my legislation and to offer your support for this highway, I mean, for this Freight Network Trust Fund. When I go back to Congress in September, I would love to come back with the strength of the second-largest city in the country's endorsement of this project so that my colleagues, both Republicans and Democrats, will see the value in passing this legislation. I think it's a win for our ports. I think it's a win for Los Angeles, and it's certainly a win for our nation's freight infrastructure and economy. Thank you. Great to be here with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's the champion that we need in Washington, DC, and that's our Congresswoman Janice Hahn. Thank you. It's crazy, colleagues, that we're getting penalized for bringing the most cargo, number of cargo coming in and out, and the money that we're getting is we're dishing out to other ports across the country. And if there's an opportunity for our port, when it comes to operating, looking at the operating budget, if we can get some money into that operating budget so the port can invest in the waterfront redevelopment efforts, that's a win for everyone. Thank you for your presentation and being a champion for us in Washington, DC, and we hope and pray that we have colleagues on the other side of the aisle that will endorse this and move forward on it. Thank you.
Mr. Buscayino, thank you for your leadership. You had big shoes to fill, and you're still filling them because Janice Hahn went on to Washington. Ms. Hahn, congratulations on your service. This helps both Long Beach and Los Angeles ports and ports across the nations. To think in our nation's history, there never was a ports caucus, never until you put it together. So we're very proud of that, Ms. Hahn, and we're going to support this legislation. No other speakers on the queue? Let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President. First, council should vote on whether to substitute.
All right. Let's vote to substitute. Open the roll on substitution. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. Now on the motion.
Yes, Mr. President.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. Fourth with, so ordered. Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's now do item seven. Rushmore, wait, I just signed. We can get you to come forward. It's my understanding that public comment has been satisfied on this issue, so... Russ, why don't you just take a moment, if you would, and talk to the members of the council about what you intend on doing when you become the permanent director?
Well, thank you very much for the introduction, Mr. President, members of the council. It is a great honor and a privilege to receive this nomination from the mayor. This is, in my career over 20 years, I can safely say this is by far the most important department and the most exciting department I've been a part of, considering the lives that we touch. I wouldn't be standing or sitting here before you this morning, however, if it weren't for the hard-working men and women of the Housing and Community Investment Department who are really incredibly dedicated to the mission and core services that we provide, and some of which are here this morning. We consider ourselves not just another city department, we are truly a mission-driven organization. Our goal is to improve, enhance the quality of lives of our constituents, as well as the homes and the neighborhoods they reside in. I'm not going to go over all of the various programs and services we provide. As you all know, it's quite lengthy. But I can tell you, once I do become permanent, this department will always be moving forward, will always be looking to ensure that our programs and services are designed and implemented based on national best practices. We will be leading the charge. We'll always be looking for innovative ways to collaborate with other entities, both public and private, to ensure that we are actually maximizing our resources, but also providing significant impactful services to our communities and our constituents that are place-based, not randomly, not shock and approach, but targeted specifically to those areas that need it the most. And we're going to then benchmark our services to ensure that we are actually having impact, and then move on from community to community to ensure that we're having a significant impact. We're going to continue to use technology to enhance our services, such as we've done already with online applications, online bill payment, as well as our F5s for our tablets for our inspectors who are able to go out to the community, and not only do habitability inspections, but are also now able to go out and identify energy-efficient opportunities for not only the constituents that reside in there, but also the property owners. And that, working side by side with the Department of Water and Power, is going to have a significant impact on the water and energy consumption throughout the city of Los Angeles. We'll continue to advance the core services. In particular, we're going to be looking at a core issue of housing. As many of you know, as the economy has slowly come up in the state and the city of Los Angeles, we still have an issue of our income levels being much lower than they were before, coupled with high cost of housing. We're a city of renters. Over 60% of our residents are renters in the city of Los Angeles, and approximately 60% of those are rent-burdened, meaning they're spending over 35% of their income on housing. We need to address that. We need to address homeless issues. We need to address veteran homeless issues. We have a crisis here in housing, and we're going to work together with the mayor, with the council, to truly identify what our goals are and means by which to identify resources, but also legislative fixes to be able to address that on a go-forward basis. It's not one item that's going to fix that. It's not one item that's going to fill that gap. It's going to be a collective number of actions that we need to take collectively in order to address those issues in the city of Los Angeles. We'll work side by side with you to address those, to help improve the quality of lives of our constituents. I'll bring any questions you may have.
Thank you. If we could now hear from the great Chair of the Housing Committee, Gilbert Sedia.
Mr. Rushmore, we're very excited about the prospects. Tell us a little bit about what we need to do to, as you indicated, we have a housing crisis. What do we need to do to increase housing stock? What are the things we can do to really facilitate those who are developing or desire to develop in our districts? And talk about, a little bit about that as it relates to the job centers in the city specifically, what's near and dear to Mr. Wezar downtown. What are some of the things that we can do to make sure that we have housing available to, close to where people work?
Well, thank you for the question, Councilman. And you stated it, housing. It's not just affordable housing. We have a housing shortage in general in the city of Los Angeles, and it plays out not just in the low-income individuals, but it plays out across the city. Middle-income individuals are also rent-burdened, and you're seeing it in the overcrowding of both single-family homes and multifamily homes where you have illegally converted units and garages and the like. It's become a serious problem. So when we look at addressing the affordable housing as well as housing stock, again, it goes to not just financing. We have honestly, you know, you've heard me petition in committee and council looking for boomerang funds. There are 41 dollars that are, $600 million that are going to be made available for housing for veterans. But that's a one-time shot. We need dedicated sources of funds to be able to address the long-term solution. In addition to that, there's legislative ways that we can actually enhance affordability being created in the city of Los Angeles. We need to work closely with the Department of Building Safety and the Planning Department to streamline those processes so that we can incentivize the creation of more affordable housing. We need to look at density bonuses and see if there's ways to enhance that. We also need to look at preserving what we do have right now. As you know, we have the restabilization ordinance, but there's ways that we can enhance that as well, so that it makes it more difficult for property owners to remove the housing units from the market. So there's many different ways that we need to approach this, and what I'd like to do is work with this committee, council, and the mayor's office to come up with the numbers that we want to achieve, and three to four or five different ways that we can achieve that that are monetary and non-monetary, to be able to successfully achieve what we need to, to provide additional housing here in the city.
Mr. Wezar.
Thank you. And, Mr. Rushmore, Cervantes, thank you for stepping up again. When I first started working with you, when you were leading the efforts at El Pueblo, that you came at a time when there were some various issues that needed some attention. You quickly handled it then, put out the fires, and put El Pueblo on the track to go to the next step, and we really appreciate your work there. I think we'll expect the same of you in this position. And as my colleague, Mr. Sedia, mentioned, you know, we all... And as my colleague, Mr. Sadio, mentioned, you know, we all know this, the need for affordable housing, the need for housing that ranges from providing simple shelter to the homeless up to work-for housing to market-rate housing so that we continue to move forward as a city in desperate need. When I first got elected in 2005, one of my first nervous times I spoke here at this chamber was when I asked a commissioner or the general manager at the time, what is the housing policy for the city of Los Angeles? We have yet to articulate that. We have yet to think about where we're building housing, what type of housing, and what type of revenue streams we're getting. You mentioned several, for the long term, to make that happen. I think with your leadership, working with the planning department, takes a cross-departmental thinking to come up with a housing policy for the city of L.A. that makes sense. And as you know, and as Mr. Sadio mentioned, you know, housing and making sure providing the type of housing we would like to see cuts across many issues. It's social service for homeless. It's providing the basics for homeless, but it's also, can drive economic development if done right. Affordable housing, workforce housing that continues our hard-working people to not worry so much and put a majority of their money into housing will continue to allow for reinvestment and improve our economy. And so we're looking to work with you, and I know you have the skills, talent. You've proven it everywhere you've gone, so I'm really excited to see you in this position so we could continue to move Los Angeles forward, and housing is probably one of the most important things we could be doing to provide a better future for the city of L.A. That's long-term planning, and we need to do more of it. But thank you, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Labange.
Very much, Mr. Rushmore. Cervantes, introduce your beautiful family that's right here. I think behind every contributing member of our city family in a variety of roles is a great family that you come from.
Well, thank you very much for offering that up. And behind every good man is a woman rolling her eyes, and that's my lovely wife, Elsie, with our son, Alec, my mother, Sybil, and one of my longtime friends, Phil, who decided to join us this morning. So I'm very thankful for them joining me this morning.
And, uh... Mr. President, members, the one thing you see around is when people rise in city government, and you've risen in city government. Where else were you, a general manager in a variety of roles?
Well, I served as general manager, as Councilman Weezer mentioned, at El Pueblo, and I was also the chief deputy controller for the Controller's Office for three years. And I was interim general manager and assistant general manager at the Department of Aging, as well as being in the CAO's office. And all of those different skills that I learned across the different types of services and programs that we provide has actually brought me full circle to where we are now. With the merger of this department with components of the Community Development Department, which includes the social service departments, the family source centers, domestic violence shelters, as well as managing the consolidated plan, has brought everything together in an organization that is really poised to be able to assist the city move forward. Because of the limited resources, it's forced us to look at alignment opportunities, look for collaboration opportunities, and having all of the different services and programs within one department, and coupled with what I bring to the table as far as the experience in working in those various departments, I think it's a perfect match, and that's why I'm very excited to take this role on. There's many daunting tasks we have ahead of us, but we need to be able to drive forward and get people on board with us, whether it be working with United Way for homeless issues, whether it be working with Metro to identify housing opportunities around transit stations. We've got 42 new stations coming in with the measure our monies, as well as working with L.A. Unified School District to provide counselors and our family source centers so that we can enhance academic achievement as well as ensuring those children stay in school. So it really runs the gamut from children all the way to our services, providing free home repairs to homes so the seniors can age in place. So it really runs the gamut.
Up the street at Dodger Stadium, they look for players who could play at multiple positions and make a team win. You've played multiple positions. You could make this team win. We have to all work together and find that. When you mentioned MTA, I know there's board members here on the MTA. When I was on the MTA board, I'm still disappointed we didn't do all we could do in North Hollywood. And now Mr. Kocorian is going to push that forward. So charge ahead. Congratulations to your family, and thank you for all that you've done in our city and continue to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the last 12 years, you've been like a chameleon, and I think that your meandering pathway has arguably made you the most qualified general manager of this department. And I think there's, you know, there's a reason for everything. And we've had some really great talks about affordable housing, and I really appreciate that, and I look forward to continuing that. You mentioned, you know, the affordability factor in Los Angeles and the fact that we are over 60% renters. In my district, it's over 80%, so that varies from district to district. But the bottom line is, the lack of affordable housing and the affordable housing crises that we are now in is affecting the livability in the city, which then affects the economy. So there are impacts, and there's never been a greater time to do something very declarative and very definitive in terms of affordable housing for our seniors, our extremely low-income families, permanent supportive housing for the homeless, our veterans. You mentioned it all, and that's really important. And I think you're just the perfect maestro to bring it all together. So I have a couple of questions for you in relation to the Housing Authority and LSA or the Homeless Services Authority. And I think that over the past many years, there's been maybe not the proper emphasis on the collaborative opportunities with the various agencies and the various caretakers, if you will, of agencies looking to house our homeless and our most vulnerable in society. Could you talk a little bit about your thoughts on that?
Certainly. Well, the three departments collectively together are critically important to the homeless cause. With the Los Angeles Homeless Services Agency, the Housing Community Investment Department provides federal funds, emergency solution grant dollars, and of course, that department also receives general fund dollars as well as other federal dollars, both from the city as well as the county. On the other side of the House, you have the Housing Authority, a department that provides the Section 8 vouchers as well as project-based vouchers. Of course, they've got 14 of their public housing projects. We actually have been working very closely, in particular with the Housing Authority. As you know, we do have our managed pipeline of affordable housing projects. Now that we have our own tax credit apportionment, we've worked very closely with the Housing Authority so that we align our resources, tax credits, home funds, to align with the project-based vouchers. So we actually have an open process by which we sit side by side and select projects so that we are maximizing both their resources as well as our resources. And as you know, there's a great emphasis particularly on downtown Skid Row for homeless issues, and that's where we need to work more closely with Los Angeles Homeless Services Agency. Even though we provide them funding, there needs to be better collaboration. And I will say that even with them and working with United Way and the Home for Good emphasis with many different partners, it's really about telling the story. In the city of L.A. and county collectively, there's been a lot of great efforts made over the years, and the problem is because of the county-city being so large, they've never really told their story, and there's not really been a true alignment. So both entities, county and city, have done a great amount of work. It's just not been aligned in the proper fashion, and we've not told the story the way we need to. So I think that we will certainly, with the mayor acknowledging and taking on the White House's mayor challenge to end homelessness of veterans by the end of 2015, that has really put emphasis on addressing homeless, least for that core. But we understand that that's just one piece of it we need to address, and it goes on beyond there about policies. It relates to when we settle the Joan settlement, where there's, right now, we have a moratorium on police officers being able to sweep the sidewalks at night at 9:00 p.m. to 6:00 in the morning. Well, once we satisfy that settlement, we'll be expected to, by some, to start sweeping the streets, and we have to ask ourselves some hard questions in the future. What is our ethics? What are our values about the homeless and how are we going to address them? And right now, they don't have places to stay, and they really need to do a better job to ensure that we're creating more housing for them.
Great, thank you. And, Mr. Chair, just one, just give me one more second, and then I'll sit down. But if you could elaborate a little bit on the coordinated entry system, which is the new system that we've moved to, to address permanent supportive housing, homeless housing, et cetera. If you could just elaborate a little bit on that, and then I want to thank you. I just think you're an outstanding choice for GM of H-SID, and I can't wait to work with you a lot more moving into the future. So congratulations.
Great, thank you. And going back to what I mentioned, Home for Good, that is run primarily by United Way, and they've created a system by which, they're working with the county of Los Angeles, whereby we're trying to create a system by which we have those that are most needy, those are the biggest users, the chronically homeless, get them pre-qualified and have them come through this coordinated entry system so that there's a methodology by which that we are collectively making the decision on who are the most needy and taking them off the streets. Because we do know that those are the biggest users, those are the most, the chronically homeless are the ones that are the biggest users of the system. So we need to target them first, and that's the department's at the table right now to discuss those.
Thank you. Mr. Fuentez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Cervantes, for accepting the challenge. You know, home is where jobs go to rest, and it's where dreams are realized, and sometimes it's where realities are faced. It's the cornerstone to our communities in Los Angeles. And while we celebrate the importance of so many different departments in the city of Los Angeles, this one is magnificent in its impact to what it is to be a healthy community, a healthy Los Angeles. And I'm terribly excited about your willingness to take this on. And I'm also equally excited about what it is that this council, predating my position here as an elected official, has done. The alignment that you're speaking to, that was underscored by Mr. Weezer and Mr. O'Farrell, the alignment that has taken place here, the ability, the additional skills and tools that we have in the department, putting together the community investment piece along with housing, I think, colleagues, puts us on the precipice of real change for how it is that we view housing. And we're terribly fortunate that we've got vision in the leadership of Mr. Sadio in this committee. We've already seen members of what used to be sort of arduous conversations come together, landlords and tenants. That ability, the additional skills and tools that we bring to the department with your management, I think, really puts us in a place that we will see, colleagues, with the ability to be here a little bit longer and steadfastly manage this issue area in Los Angeles, we will see, I think, some really dramatic results. And so the question becomes for all of us, how it is that we're going to amplify the importance of this department, how it is that we're going to be mindful to our constituents and everybody that speaks to the need for housing. But I would endeavor to say that we should move from housing to home creation, and what it is that we're going to make these places, these spaces, more amenable to creating homes for Angelenos. It's a difficult, important charge. I congratulate you. I think you can see by all of the comment today how important this job is and how our desires and hopes for you being successful are going to be realized. Thank you, Mr. Cervantes, and I'm looking forward to your continued leadership.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Englander.
I can't add anything that was already said. It's all been said. And I've had the opportunity to know and work with you, and I know we're in good hands, but we can't do this alone. We've got to do it together. This is a monumental task, and I think the worst thing we can do on the homeless issue is simply warehouse people, quite frankly. So it's not just a matter of solving the issue by providing shelter. They have to be clean, safe, healthy. They have, they add the services and health services that most people don't have, coupled with job training and placement, looking at all the mental health issues as well and working with the county. And you've reached out to all those folks and continue to do so.
Yes.
So one of the worst things that I've seen, quite frankly, since I've been on the council, and I think the worst thing that can happen to a homeless family is to actually lose their shelter. I mean, imagine you're homeless and you finally get shelter, and then you lose that. And we had that opportunity, unfortunate opportunity, in the San Fernando Valley with the Valley Rescue Mission. And Mr. Kocorian actually stepped up big time, brought all the Valley Council members together, went out to the media, went to all the nonprofits. We've got a new shelter that we just opened in Northridge to house them, and my district as well. We're cutting the ribbon on next week. But through his leadership, and I know working with your office and so many others, we were able to help, but not just help those families, but we got to meet those families and put a face on the problem and a name on the problem. And it's a horrific thing to see that somebody who's lost everything then lost everything they didn't have as well. We've got a big problem here in Los Angeles to solve, and I look forward to working with you. I know you're the right person for the position, and we're fortunate to have you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to join my colleagues, Mr. Cervantes, in just thanking you for your past service and your efforts in really changing the landscape for citizens in this city. We know how important housing is as a component of economic development, and we know the unique role that nonprofits play in providing housing of all sorts. Talk a little bit about the role you see nonprofits playing, how they can be more proactively engaged, how the city can work with them in helping to leverage limited resources, working with for-profit developers, making sure that the kinds of housing are available, not only senior, not only workforce, but even market rate. What role do you see nonprofits playing, community-based nonprofits playing, in delivering these housing services to our citizens?
Well, for years, nonprofit organizations have been the lifeblood of the city of Los Angeles as it allocates federal resources to the community, and it will continue to be so. In the affordable housing development arena, there are for-profits as well as nonprofits. They both do equally good job as far as producing affordable housing. But as far as the overall mission of this department in particular, and helping those most needy in the communities, it's really, the nonprofit organizations are the lifeblood. They are in the communities. They are the ones that are on the boots on the ground. We're providing the resources too. So it's incumbent upon us as department and the city to ensure that we are actively working with the nonprofits, to ensure that we build capacity in communities where the services are needed the most. And those that don't have the capacity, we need to develop the capacity. We don't want to put resources in a community just because it's a nonprofit that is productive. We need to put the nonprofit where the needs are, and that's technical assistance, and that's ensuring that we've got the right services where they need to be.
Mr. Bonin, and then Mr. Sadio to close. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to rise and say thank you, Rushmore. You have been, as long as I've been with the city, I've seen you in some capacity in the city, running some agency either on a permanent or an interim basis, and I'm delighted that the mayor has selected you to be the permanent GM for housing. I think you're absolutely phenomenal. We have some unique challenges in building affordable housing in my district due to the cost of land, but I'm looking forward to having some offline conversations with you about how we can do that. But thank you very much for everything you've done and what you're going to be doing.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, Mr. Sadio to close.
To close, we're very excited. We've got a lot to do.
Yes.
Let me ask you just one last question, though, before we move forward. I want you to give us, we had a discussion about the homeless. Talk about the collaboration that will be essential and what it is that the city actually does, what we can do, what the county does, what it can do, what the state legislature can do to help us address this particular problem. And then finally, let's talk a little bit in your close about your vision for the district and how our work with the state legislature can really facilitate this great leap forward that we hope to have in housing and really make a dent in the housing crisis.
Right. Well, as I've stated previously, Councilman, working with the Los Angeles Homeless Services Agency as well as the Housing Authority of Los Angeles and H-SID, those are three city departments. We need to work very closely with the county of Los Angeles as well. That's the other piece of the pie as it relates to providing a true continuum of care and services as well as the brick and mortar for the services for the homeless, and particularly the chronically homeless. And we look at the senior homeless as well as the veteran homeless. It all revolves around the services, the brick and mortar, the vouchers. We all have to work collectively together. And it all starts, though, with what is our vision, what is our goal collectively for a region? And that's what's always been missing here, is really having that true vision. We know what the needs are based on regional housing needs assessments, but it's really targeting what is it we think we can achieve and what are we needed from each of those entities to be able to collaborate and ensure that we have our resources going to the same targeted areas in the same parts of the city to ensure that they have equal access to transportation, equal access to care, whether it be medical, mental, as well as access to any social services, much like our family source centers, to make sure that we're enriching economic empowerment with them as well. We need to have the full spectrum of services because the weakest, the city is only as strong as its weakest link, and those are the people that we need to address the most. So on a legislative basis, as far as what the city can do, is actually work closely with the state legislators to look at various bills that could potentially have an impact on the city of Los Angeles, such as, an example, we look at the Ellis Act, and that's more on the preservation side, to ensure that we're making it more challenging... that's more on the preservation side, to ensure that we're making it more challenging for rental units or housing to be removed from the market. We need to be able to preserve what we can. We can't build our way out of this. There has to be done, something done on the legislative side. Here locally in the city of LA, we need again once to look at, from a planning perspective, what type of zoning do we want to look at, what type of requirements do we want to impose potentially on four-rate developers? And there's, there's some easy fixes there potentially. When I say easy, it's easy on paper, but obviously there has to be a lot of dialogue and discussion. But it really comes from the point of having a clear vision as where the city needs to be, understanding there's a crisis ahead of us, even though we've got a number of projects in our pipeline, 31 projects in the pipeline, the cliff is coming, cliff is coming very quickly. We don't have the resources in place. So we need to really, as a, as a community, as a, as a region, both LA County and LA City, we need to be on the same page. I mean, lobbying Sacramento for the very same things that Northern California is doing, they're doing a better job than we are, quite frankly. We need to step up the plate because we have the greatest need right here in Southern California, LA County in particular, LA City. We've got a tremendous amount of homelessness. We need to be able to get our fair share in them some.
Thank you. Members, let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Rush, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We'll now move to item, item 10. No applause, got no applause. We're going to move on to item, item 10. Mr. Corretts, you called item 10 special.
Yes, I'd like to have staff come up and answer a couple of questions.
Okay, so if we can get the staff, they're already en route.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I wanted to ask our, our staff if they knew that the city has had a recycled paper purchasing policy since 1992.
Yes, we do know that. I just came back about six months ago, David Way, Chief Operator, Chief Minister of Office, Matt Lamp, who's head of our IT area, and Sean Gove, who heads our customer service, and absolutely, Congressman, we are aware of that and very, I wanted to, maybe the only reason I wanted to assure you, we're very committed to that policy. In fact, our purchasing department is making a presentation today to our board that has clearly stated goal in, in their operations and one that we are very serious about pursuing. So, yes.
And did the RFP request recycled paper use?
It did. In fact, I can have Matt Lamp give you a quick, an update on that if that would be helpful and some things we've discovered here very recently.
Thank you. Councilmember Corretts and members of the council, the RFP did include the requirements around recycled paper. When we first installed those paper printers, we were printing our old bills, which were all on recycled paper. When we went to the new bill design, which was full-color duplex printing, we started to run into a couple problems with the recycled paper, but we did print with them for a period of time. We found, however, when those bills got wet, that we had a problem that made it impossible to process in our automated equipment, the returned receipt with the checks. And so if we would get thousands of those back that could not be processed, we were having a significant problem posting people's payments in time, which in turn would lead to potentially late payment charges, a lot of manual intervention required. At that point, we worked with the paper manufacturers to resolve that problem, and that led us to a special paper that at that point was virgin. We've been using that since 2012. We continue to work with the paper manufacturers and the printing manufacturers, and they continue, they have identified some new pa, new versions of recycled paper, new chemistry to test, and also a new ink that they've made available for those printers that they believe will resolve the problem with recycled paper. And we're committed to moving forward and testing those.
So if, if it does turn out that the new paper and the new ink combinations are workable and we can use recycled paper, will we need to amend the contract that we're talking about approving today? Or can we purchase the recycled paper if we're able to move forward with that?
This contract is the contract we use to purchase the recycled paper we were using and then the later formulation. So we believe we will be able to continue to use this contract to acquire the paper that we would need. The ink is already under a contract with, through this manufacturer, so we believe that the new version of ink is also available under our current contract. We're getting estimates. There's some modifications needed to the printers to use the new ink, but first we basically have to start the testing process, which we will commit to do right away.
And our, our current policy, the environmentally preferred purchasing policy, has DWP ever adopted that policy?
I don't, I had heard maybe they had not officially adopted that, but let me find out for you. If not, we certainly can and would do that. There's no reason, unless there's some procedural reason. I'm not aware of, you know, I don't, so let me find out. But we're, it is part of our presentation to the board today, so there's no question that we are behind that and would do that if necessary.
Yeah, so if, if it turns out you haven't adopted that policy formally, you're indicating that you will make every effort to.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, thank you. And I'm going to introduce a motion today that also I hope will help DWP remedy the situation that you're in. And I am going to somewhat reluctantly vote for this with the expectation that you will follow through, as you said, and try your best to position yourself to be able to use recycled paper.
Yeah, we will do that and certainly keep you and your staff advised and the committee advised as we go forward with this. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Labans and Mr. Bonin.
On the paper, I'm an old printer, and if it's web-fed, that's a connected, big roll, it's got to be real strong or doesn't make it through the press. Sheet-fed is a little different, but this is on a roll, right? This is web-fed, so it makes a difference. So I wanted to mention that, Paul. Did you take printing at Hamilton High? I was real good at Marshall High on that. And the next thing, you did?
I did take printing and I also am familiar with web presses and all that. I've done a lot with printing as well.
Very good. And the other question, how, what percentage of, how many bills we send out every, every billing period, which I know is spread out over time? How many bills we send out?
We send out about 50,000, 40 to 50,000 bills a day.
But I mean, but what's that total? How many bills do we send out total?
Well, it's, it's 1.4 million bills a month.
1.4 billion months, but spread all out. And then in that too, how many are now wire paperless bills?
We have about, almost 10% of our customers do take a paperless bill right now.
Got it. So that's very important as it grows and grows and grows. So keep it up, just do it right, because I think that's all you want. And I know, Mr. Wigs, I appreciate all the work that you've done in the past and steer this in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Bonin, I think you're going to close. And Mr. Englander, if you could make your way to the president's chair. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, the reason I'm rising, and I think the reason Mr. Corretts put this in, is this is actually a fairly significant issue. We have a utility which has been making great strides in recent years. Mr. Levine talked about some of it today, in becoming a more environmentally friendly utility and making sure that Los Angeles is as green as it needs to be and as it should be. This is not a step in the right direction. The reason that Mr. Corretts called this special, I would have myself, is that we are about to purchase millions of dollars worth of paper that is virgin paper. This is about deforestation. You know, 15% of greenhouse gas that, that is causing problems in the world right now is due to deforestation, and this is a contributing factor to it. We've had a policy in the city for quite some time that we should be using recycled materials, and this doesn't do that. So it's, it's a significant issue. It's, frankly, twice as significant as it would have been a few months ago because we're now going to a monthly billing cycle, so we'll be using twice as much virgin paper as, as we would have been otherwise. So I have concerns about this. It's been explained to me by my staff that part of the reason you're buying this paper, the virgin paper, is that the machines we've purchased can't handle the recycled. Why, if we have a recycled, recycled purchasing policy, do we have, why did we buy machines that can't handle recycled paper?
Well, actually, as I said, we initially were printing on recycled paper. The problems we ran into had to do with, as we automate the process and have to rely more and more on very precise barcode locations and, and legibility. What we found is if the mail got wet in any point along the process between when it left us and when it came back to us with the return envelope, those barcodes were no longer legible. And that meant that we could get thousands of return checks in a day that we could not process.
Is, is the issue that we bought, that we're buying the virgin paper because of the issues with the printing, the outgoing, or is it about the scanning and the incoming? Or is it both?
Well, it really relates to both. It has to do with whether or not the ink is flowed enough into the paper that it can withstand, the paper quality can withstand it getting wet without smearing the barcodes. And that's what we believe in talking to the manufacturer, that some of the new configurations, chemical makeups of recycled paper and the new ink can solve. But these are pretty recent developments, and we will move forward to test those and move into it as soon as we can.
Yeah, I would think part of the recycled purchasing policy would be making sure that if we buy equipment that handles paper or handles materials, that it can handle recyclable material. Lots of places make recycled paper. Have we tested recycled paper from other places, places other than Staples?
We were working with, really Staples is a supplier that gets their paper from multiple sources.
You can just be mindful of your time, Mr. Bonin.
We went through them to multiple sources and, and really were working with the paper scientists on the configurations that were required in terms of both strength and absorbency of ink and the ability to resist the water problem.
Final question very quickly. When I sign on to pay my credit card bill online, I get hit repeatedly every time I sign on by a pop-up ask saying, please go to paperless. When I pay the DWP bill, I don't, although there is an option to sign up, I don't get that. Is there a way we can do that to, to more forcefully encourage people to switch to paperless?
We can absolutely, absolutely do that, and we should do that. So I will work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other speakers on the queue, and I understand the paper scientists couldn't be with us today, is that correct? Okay. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll on this item, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
Great, thank you so much. Now I'd like to go to item two. Mr. Clerk?
Oh, actually, I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Farrell.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Oh, yeah. Madam Clerk, I apologize. Yes, please.
All right. Colleagues, I would like to introduce Randall R. Murphy, who is an appointment to the LA City, LA County Native American Indian Commission. And just, just introduce him to all of you and talk a little, little bit about the work of this very important and, but oftentimes little-known committee. Welcome, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Murphy was approved through my committee last week, and his resume is so incredibly impressive. Here are a few examples of that. Graduate of Yale Law School, chairman of the Yale Law School, American Indian Law Students Association. Mr. Murphy is a member of the Lakota tribe by adoption but born part Choctaw. The commission that he's being appointed to processes the, the federal grants and the work and the amenities and resources that are provided to LA County from the Bureau of Indian Affairs. Here's an example of what we're looking at, serving 250,000 Native Americans from over 200 tribes locally. We're the second-largest population just in LA County in the United States. So the work of this commission is very, very important. The three biggest tribes in LA County are the Gabriolinos, Fernandeos, and the Chumash. Currently, Mr. Murphy is a deputy attorney general for the state of California. He has been working to establish a free legal clinic for the Native American community in Los Angeles, working with the commission he is now being appointed to, is a neighborhood activist and served on the Greater Toluca Lake Neighborhood Council from '04 to '06, and is on the National Native American Bar Association. So I just wanted to take a quick moment, have him just say a few brief remarks about himself and his goals for the commission, and then I urge a full support and confirmation of his appointment to the commission. Thank you. Mr. Randall?
Thank you, Councilman O'Farrell. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee and the city council. It's a great honor to be sitting here today, and I don't know how to express that simply, so I will leave it at that. What Councilman O'Farrell has indicated is absolutely true. Los Angeles is home to the largest Native American population outside the reservation. And we have a community which is poverty-stricken. We have a community which is lightly educated. Many of our members do not graduate from high school and need services that, that require people who understand the community to deliver to them. And Councilman O'Farrell mentioned my efforts to establish a Native American legal aid clinic that is not to be perceived as a litigation clinic but a self-help clinic, to help our members prepare forms and file for such aid as is available to them because so many of our population do not understand how these things work. And that is, is an important thing to help them get aid and, and services that are in place already but which they don't really know how to access. I've also spoken with Councilman O'Farrell, the, the committee that I've appeared before on Los Angeles Unified School District already has a Native American group within it, which is focused on keeping our kids in school, which is a tremendous problem in our community. And hopefully we'll be able to expand our work to help them do their job correctly. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than interested in helping answer them.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll for your confirmation, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take items three and four together. If I can please ask Mr. Richard Lehner and Mr. Marty Cooper to come to the table as well? First, if you don't mind, I'm going to do the introduction on both of you, if I could. And because I've known both of you for so long, so many years, and you've done so much for the city of Los Angeles and particularly the San Fernando Valley. Richard, you have been a major force in the valley and critically important to the mainstream business and the thriving business economy there. It's truly phenomenal, just going through, I'm not even going to go through your professional resumes because, quite frankly, they're, they're just too long, both of you. But just your civic engagement, just to give people a sense of some of the things that you've done is, is remarkable. And those are, these are high-profile leadership positions. Richard Lehner was chairman of the United Chambers of Commerce in the San Fernando Valley, president of the Encino Chambers of Commerce, president of the Neighborhood Council, president of the Executive Committee, the Economic Alliance, member of the Business Advisory Committee, the speaker at that time, Bob Hertzberg. He also served on Assembly Member Levine's Advisory Commission, member of the San Fernando Valley Transportation Strike Force, serves on the United Chambers of Commerce, Director of Finance and Marketing, president of the Encino Business Improvement District, chairman of the Board of the Valley Vote, Executive Committee Member of the Encino Chamber of Commerce, member of the Executive Committee of the Economic Alliance, was appointed to the Commission of the North Valley Planning Committee and served as its president as well, is an adjunct professor, marketing and management, currently serves on the loan co-... Currently serves on the Loan Committee of the Valley Economic Development Center, is a former Fernando Award recipient, the highest honor given to any awardee or lifetime of volunteerism in the San Fernando Valley, past board member and president of the Commercial Division of Southland Regional Association of Realtors, a member of the international conferences, shopping, this goes on and on and on and on. I mean, it's really, did you clone yourself at one point in your life, is what I really want to know. I've known you for many years, you and Barbara, your whole family, truly phenomenal people. And I will ask both of you to answer one question as soon as I go through both your introductions. Marty Cooper, another living legend and icon here in the city and the valley, and one of the most incredible experienced marketing strategic planners, financial relations, crises management, communications, people that I've ever seen and met. And quite frankly, what you've been able to do, not just with your clients and having, by the way, this is the gentleman who started the Playboy Jazz Festival, so you know, and many other things that you've done in your life, which are truly incredible and will outlive all of us with your fingerprints and your footprint here in the city of Los Angeles. But again, civically, a long laundry list of so much activity, from president of Los Angeles Quality and Productivity Commission and chairman of VICA's Board of Governors, Valley Industry and Commerce Association Research Foundation, member of the Board of Governors of Valley Economic Alliance, founding president of the Executives, vice chairman of Boys and Girls Club, the West Valley, honorary fellow of the Harry Truman Library Institute, member of the state Fran Pavly's Valley Advisory Council, Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences, director, counsel of UCLA William Andrews Clark Library. It goes on and on and on, your awards from PRSA and so many other things, well-deserved. Having you two on the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, the authority is critically important. My question to you, and because this is one of the most important major economic engines here in the region, attracting tourists and visitors here to Los Angeles and looking at all of those issues, and we finally have a partnership, public-private partnership, where we've established that with the convention center as well, so we can do a lot more. The 2020 commission that came out, there was a recommendation to reach out to all the other municipalities and start creating some kind of JPA or MOU with all the other regions here, to start marketing Los Angeles as a region. What do you feel about that, and what kinds of things do you think we should be doing to attract more visitors here to Los Angeles? So I'll let you both take a stab at that.
The commission to which we're being, for which we're nominated today itself is a joint powers authority between the city and the county. More things get done when more people and more organizations are involved. I'm sure you all saw the story in this morning's Los Angeles Times that shows that Los Angeles has slipped to number 19 in the country when it comes to preferences for locations for conventions. We all are very proud of the fact that we're the second-largest city in the country, but we're number 19th when it comes to conventions and business meetings of size. Tourism dollars and convention dollars are the cleanest dollars we can have in this city. People come here, spend money, have a good time, and then they leave. Their need for city services is minimal. The dollars they leave behind is, to use what is not a real word, maximal. I think we only do ourselves good by working with as many interested parties as we can in order to improve our stature as a convention and tourism destination for the country.
I think we've been charged with the obligation, excuse me, expanding the convention center, developing the hotels in the area, and creating a better atmosphere for the convention years. I think that my background will allow me to do that, since I've been in real estate and in finance, and I'm excited about this prospect. It's quite a job. But I think reaching out to the other communities and, as Councilman Englander knows, I know a lot of people in the other communities, and I will be, if asked to, I'll be involved in meeting with these other communities and bringing them together with us.
Great, thank you. Seeing no questions from any of my colleagues on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll on both of you together and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That's unanimous. Congratulations, commissioners, really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for your service, your continued service. Okay, we're going to go ahead and take items 31, 32, and 33, commission appointment, reappointments together, and we have one card from Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or straight to J. Walsh Confidential, or tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Now, I just want you to know, I take these particular appointees one by one. Some of them should be eliminated, the previous one in particular, but Ms. Araceli Campos to the Commission on the Status of Women is an excellent choice. We need more Hispanic women on the commission, on all these commissions. You might try one on the DWP commission, and you don't have an Hispanic woman on the DWP commission. Maybe that's why, the reason for the neglect. Ms. Araceli Campos resides in Council District Five, and that's Mr. Coretts's district, and we're looking forward to her doing an excellent job. Notice I don't get interrupted when I'm positive. Next is Ms. Dallas Fowler, again, another woman to this commission. See, they pin all the women up in the Women's Commission, and they keep the big macho water ones for guys like Mel Levine Levine. But despite that, Ms. Fowler will do an excellent job. We checked on Ms. Fowler, as you know, one of your previous appointments was caught and is in prison now for kiddie porn. Ms. Fowler has no record of any kind of kiddie porn. And the third one is Ms. Jessica Postigo, again, to the Commission on the Status of Women. I'm not sure whether you're going to have, so now it's seven to zero. Well, we men really don't understand the status of women, so I think that seven to zero is fine when it's the status of, Commission on the Status of Women, but it's not right when it's on other commissions. I think these are three good appointments. By coincidence, they're all contributors either directly or indirectly to the Mayor Garcetti's campaign, and we'd like to point out that when Bradley was mayor, you just got appointed, Reardon, you got appointed. Now, all three of these women had to file a, was given a statement to sign without a date, an undated statement of resignation. So if the mayor doesn't like what they're doing, he just puts the date on it and boots these three women out. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, and Juan? Juan, for 31.
Thirty-one, communication from the mayor, city has excommunication relative to the three women. Salim, yeah, on the preview of the homeless item thing.
Again, it's got to be on the specific item. You filled out a card for item 31.
Yeah, I just noticed that those people that service the homeless make more money than any homeless ever will.
And again, that's not on the item.
That's cool. I mean, any of these people that you put in, really, what difference does it make? You're all playing with a system that systematically puts down homeowners and people that actually could be better contributors, and it's all the same thing. It just keeps going around in circles, and things don't really get fixed, but in theory, everybody here bores everybody to death with all these flowery speeches and absolutely nothing for the people. Blah, 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 blah.
Thank you for sharing that. Deeper thoughts? All right. So with that, seeing no other cards, seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those appointments, close the roll, and blah, 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 blah. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. All right. So now we'll go ahead and take items 1, 36, and 37 next. We have one card on item one. Eddie Gomez? And Sergeant, can we get you to move the center chair? Thank you, sir.
Yes, Your Honor, I'm in a hardship. I've been assaulted many times. I've helped the community many times. I did a test for Mayor Bradley. I helped Gil Garcetti get elected. I've worked on his campaign. I've helped Art Snyder. I was coaching the kids. I worked aerospace. I worked recreation and parks. I worked postal, post office. Right now, I'm having hardship. I just was assaulted again. See, I'm supposed to be in the hospital, I'm supposed to be with doctors, supposed to do x-rays. I, six hundred dollars ago, I'm willing to make payments. I go, I need an extension. I go, I don't want to lean on the house. I've been a pillar, a good pillar of the community. I just talked to them. I have a council meeting tonight with them. I just, I just, they sent me a letter saying it was a hundred dollars, and then it went to six hundred dollars. I never got the letter. They sent it to the post office. I had to pay a payment because they were short on postage, so it went up to six hundred dollars. I, right now, I'm indigent. I'm on low income, on fixed income. I took care of my mother, I take care of kids, I help people, and right now, I'm just right now, it's really hard for me. I've only got fixed income, barely making payments.
Okay, this is, this is...
So if I could get an extension or something?
This is what we can do. The council office is going to meet you on the side, and we're going to go ahead and hold this over for two weeks. So that'll be September, actually, why don't we make it three weeks, September 9th? You have a little more time.
I don't have the ability to, is there a way I could do a payment plan? I'm willing to...
They're going to meet you on the side to see what they can work out on that with you, okay?
Thank you, Your Honor.
So we'll go ahead, we won't take an action on this today at all. We'll bring it back in three weeks to find out if you were able to work something like that. All right? All right, bless you. Thanks for coming today. Appreciate it.
For the record, Mr. President, that's item 1C.
That is 1C, that is correct. Next on these items, we have Herman for item 1, item 36, and item 37.
Residents of Los Angeles, item 1, Eddie for a lien at 2927 East Ashbury Street, immediately lien for 606.17 cents. I'm not going to mention what council district this is in CD1. 2927 East Ashbury Street. I want this proposed lien for noncompliance and city code and Los Angeles municipal code for these provisions to stop, to cease, to disrupt and abuse all of those who are adversarily affected by building and safety, just like the gentleman in The Walker. Batman's heart reaches out to all of you for the purpose of dissolving the illegal liens, Mr. Big Ears. But I'm going on point 37 now. Very important issue on 37 that the public needs to know and be aware of. Besides what Ms. Hahn was talking about, federal legislative programs for support of HR 5101. At what time? A very serious time, but on topic, relative to the offering reward of information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of persons involved in bank robberies committed in West Los Angeles area. West Los Angeles area, now you have the adverse situation by Mr. Coretts, LaPonce, and Englander...
You're not on subject. Again, you're not on subject.
I'm on subject, according to the...
And you've got to address the entire council.
According to the lien, identification, apprehension, and conviction of persons involved responsible for bank robberies committed in the West Los Angeles area. How can Batman be wrong? It's on paper, in fact, for all of you to hear. Mr. Englander, do you have the ears like Batman to listen?
And again, you're off subject, so that's your third warning. That'll be your last warning.
On topic, relative to the offer reward of information leading to the...
You're simply being repetitive.
Bank robbery, sir. Under what Brown Act do we speak under, sir?
Council rules.
Does the California rule say that under the Brown Act, I have to speak specifically to your topic of conversation, sir?
Again, sir, if you want to wrap up and finish up, that'll be the rest of your time.
I will wrap it up, under the agreement of 54950 to 54963, that we, the public, demand justification.
Okay, and how much, let's see here. All right, Juan for items 1, 36, and 37.
She's on 37 also. This is right down my aisle because the city illegally puts liens on people's homes, people that already own a place. We don't like the way your yard looks. We don't like your fence, your chain-link fence. We don't like this, we don't like that. So now we're going to charge you just to have a place to live. You don't have enough bills from DWP and the Electric Commission and blah, blah, blah. You don't have enough, enough things on your shoulders, so now we're going to put another lien on you, and eventually we'll wind up with your property in our payroll. And what are all those people that are putting the liens? They're making money on other people's misfortune. What a stupid system. I went to Guadalajara, Mexico, and they have too much water over there, and you ain't got no water over here.
Okay, again, not on the subject, so please stay on the subject.
This is on infrastructure. We need the infrastructure to have all the services running, and we don't need any tax liens or building and safety department. The city is not that safe. A little earthquake is going to crumble everything to the ground anyways, so, you know. And we had two earthquakes lately. That means we're probably headed for something big. Yeah? Batman's...
Again, not on any of these subject matters.
Right, he knows, he knows what's going...
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right. Donna Perlman, 37.
37, this is the information leading to the conviction of series of bank robbers. Personally, I would think that would not be safe. If I knew any information on this, I sure wouldn't give it, because these people are very dangerous, and chances are, they're ruthless enough to go after a lot of banks over in West Los Angeles. Chances are, they'll be ruthless enough to go after anybody who gives information. You know, snitches get stitches. And basically, I would like to see, people should be able to, be able to protect themselves by able to be armed themselves in case they go into a spot where they go in and people want to rob... And basically, I would like to see, people should be able to, be able to protect themselves by able to be, arm themselves in case they go into a spot where they go in and people wanted to rob the bank, they would leave if they knew that somebody over there might be able to stop the robbery in the first place by just pointing at them. So, you know, until they actually got somebody real like a police, just to hold them off, not to actually do the thing. And so I just wanted to say that I meant to say that gun control laws only impede the law-abiding citizens. So I don't trust this reward system for going after bank robbers because basically you're going to get yourself in danger. Just let the police do their job. They'll find, figure it out how to do it. You don't need to have, nobody needs to have themselves killed over this reward. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one more card on one E. Rod Celard.
Good afternoon. Hi, how are you? Um, yeah, I have no, I have full intentions of dealing with the building department issue. And the house that I purchased, it already had a, a small ten-by-four addition, of which I've talked to the inspector, Mr. Valenzuela, and gave him a letter, and also sent a letter to the DA regarding this, that I have full intention of doing the proper inspection, but I've been out of the country and then had some health issues, so just had not had time to deal with it at this point. I have copies of the letters if you want those.
Okay. What we'll do is we'll go ahead and, why don't we go ahead and continue it for three weeks? Give you time if you can work with the council office as well. Hang out here until they, they just stepped out for a minute. They said they would meet with you for a moment.
Okay.
That'll give you till September ninth, and then they'll come back here again, but hopefully by then you can resolve it or come to some conclusion.
Sure. You said just wait?
Yeah, just if you could. And we'll notify them as soon as we can locate them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Oh, they're here now. That's government expediency. All right. So with that, we'll go ahead and continue that one E until September ninth. That's three weeks. We'll open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Great. Excellent. Thank you so much. Forthwith on thirty-six is the request from Mr. Buscagno. That request is denied. Just kidding. Okay, that goes forthwith without objection, and just seeing if you're still awake, members. All right. Public, general public comment. Our favorite part of the program, Dr. Tom Williams, followed by Donna Pearlman, followed by Jose Martinez, and if the other two speakers can line up behind the second set of velvet ropes. So I know you're ready, and followed by John Walsh, Brian Barajas, Herman, Juan, and Eddie Gomez. All right. That's the lineup.
Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. Thirty-two Neighborhood Council, also Sierra Club Transportation Committee. Over the last couple of weeks, the MTA has had a couple of meetings regarding the state Route 710 North Extension. Problem: They are now saying that the portal will extend from approximately Hellman on the existing 710 stub to about five hundred, eight hundred feet north of Valley Boulevard. The portal. They actually call it now the portal, as most of the industry would be calling it. So in L.A., you will have a hole that will be approximately two hundred feet across, maybe two hundred feet deep, and at least seven hundred feet long in the city of Los Angeles. A while ago, we had resolutions from the city council saying, oh, that the portal shall begin and end south of Valley Boulevard. It took us two weeks just to add the words "and end" because we know what's going to happen. They are now going to have the largest, deepest hole in, eh, probably most of L.A., next to Grifols Biotechnical Industry, one of our few industries in L.A. Thirty-two Neighborhood Council. So we're quite concerned that the city representatives to the SR 710 North Extension Technical Advisory Committee and to the stakeholders committee meetings are not representing the city of Los Angeles and what we need. We have to stop the 710 construction in the city of L.A., as you have voted unanimously for. Thank you.
The name is Pearman, by the way, not Pierman, whatever you said. Anyway, we need to open, reopen, my name is Donna Pearman. We need to reopen Van Nuys video conferencing to allow people from the valley to speak to City Hall so you don't have to take the two-hour trip to downtown. Reopen it. Second, I need to, as I said in some speech just a minute ago, that gun control laws only impede the rights of law-abiding citizens. Gun control laws take away the rights of goon owners of every ethnicities, rights of American, American blacks, Hispanics, Asians, Caucasians, and so on. Now, I bring back to Ferguson, Missouri. You want to take away their rights to protest like you would take our rights to protest by video conferencing. Yes, you want to take away their rights to protest. The police do have the business, protect businesses and keep order, but standing in full gear only intimidates them and angers the crowd. They could not, they just told him it was time to go home, come back to protest tomorrow, so all that gassing wouldn't have been necessary, tear gassing wouldn't have been necessary. Not go home, we will arrest you. Second, I believe the police overstepped their boundaries with Michael Brown having to kill as the last resort, not first. They could have stunned him or disabled him or asked for backup. Six shots to an unarmed teen suspect is too much. The policeman will have his day in court, though, and let the courts deal with him. Let's not loot and burn our own communities, and let's come up with a solution. We need to be able to gather this, what ISIS and other terrorists want. Divide us and destroy us. We need to unite. All people in America, unite and be ready to fight the terrorists who have no mercy, no negotiation, no bill of rights. It was, and over there is murder and slavery in Iraq to the Christians. Where is the outcry from the Christians? None. So we need to bring together, come together, because that's the only way we can fight terrorists, not beat them.
John Walsh with his hands up. I don't want to get shot like Izel Ford did here or Michael Brown. My white skin protects me. If my skin were black, I'd probably get shot. That's the way it works here and in Missouri. Let's start with boxer Feinstein sitting you didn't hear about in the media. Yesterday, Code Pink and a women's peace group and Palestinians occupied the offices in L.A., you didn't see it in the press, of Diane Feinstein and boxer. Boxer negotiated a deal with them. She's going to meet with them. The thing that that vicious, vile Feinstein, who gets on her knees in front of Benjamin Netanyahu, did was immediately arrest all twelve Code Pink people and lead them off in handcuffs. Now, you didn't see this in the L.A. Times because they are 100% in favor of Israel, and they hate all Islamics. Austin Butner, the new publisher, is making $675,000 a year, and all you reporters over there, a lot of you are going to get fired. And we just gave, we just, Budweiser Grand Park, huge riot in the making this Labor Day weekend. You've just received, you're going to receive $500,000 to repair all the damage. That's what you just voted on. Wi-Fi not working as usual here. Come to HollywoodHighlands.org, find out about the simultaneous sit-ins at Boxer's office in L.A. and Feinstein's office. See the pictures. Go to @HollywoodDems, and we're putting it up on Hollywood on our website. HollywoodHighlands.org, Jay Walsh Confidential, Twittering @HollywoodDems.
Angelinos, Live Nation Worldwide Inc. Old Music, Old Noise, Old Business, Made in America, item number thirty-six, and regarding the what? Negotiated compensation of half a million dollars? No, $500,000 for the use of city services for Live Nation Worldwide. Budweiser, 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 bring it on, bring it on. All we need is more yellow tape, right? Caution, do not enter. Why? Because it is civil rights activist Mr. Herman from Boyle Heights who've asked me, Batman, to speak on behalf of Mr. Speaker there to make him understand what the litigation of this council's for. And while Batman was at the LAPD Police Commission this morning, you can go on live and listen, Batman had a very important concern. That concern was that you, the public, needed the assistance for the welfare and the safety of all those who are being injured and killed. By whom? The uneducated police officers who abuse people with ADA issues. People who are being injured, killed, because they raised their hands up, and all we can do is place the yellow tape up. Caution, do not enter. So reach out, Americans. Let's join the club. What this council's all about. Item thirty-six, Made in America, $500,000 for the use of city services, Live Nation Worldwide Inc. of America. Comply with ADA, Mr. Englander. Listen. Big Ears.
I'm sorry, did you say something? Uh, okay. Next speaker, please.
By the way, camera people, we have better cameras than you. We can do close-ups while you try to minimize us. You are a total idiot, working for the system, and it's not working. Look, we got real close-ups right here. Uh-huh. And you know what? We're telling you what you are. You're a bunch of servants which have gone awry. You have actually climbed on top of your masters, which are we, the taxpayers. And I don't know how the hell you got those jobs that you are so proudly, proudly representing who? Not the people. You're representing yourselves. And the housing commissioner? I went to ask him. When can I get a house? Hell, no. All we got is shelters. What the hell? You, you don't offer any, any permanent solutions to any problems. The problem of housing will only be solved when everybody has a place to live and doesn't have to pay rent to some other idiot that is only getting rich out of others, such as the guy that used to own the basketball team that just sold for $2 billion. That asshole wouldn't even let anybody in his buildings that he did not approve of. And you talk about civil rights and these rights and homeless rights? You're all full of shit.
Let me emphasize a direction for everybody to consider. There's nothing that you can do, at least in the short term, like what happened here with Janice Hahn, that can actually resolve the situation. Let's go for the juggernaut that you have a president like in Egypt, Al Sisi, immediately puts 1.2 million people or 1.5 million people, at least considering highly, to work at the Suez Canal. He just did that immediately. But for some reason, nobody gets the fact that our president, the, the action that he takes is, let's go to war in Iraq. There's no FDR in him. There's no, let's go after Wall Street. There's no, let's build the economy first. There's only in him, Obama, there's, oh, let's go to war, 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 let's go to war. And then all of you, hey, Mr. Englander, but all of you don't seem to understand, as Shakespeare says, as Hamlet. You have to be conscious, but the opposite of Hamlet's situation, that we are human beings. We love the fact that we're conscious, of the fact that we can actually control the situation and identify the problem and execute the authority that our constitution gives us. So what do we do in this situation? We have a president who has to be impeached, but yet Speaker Boehner wants to protect this president. Why? And why are we allowing that to take place? So we have to impeach Boehner, impeach Obama, get back to the Constitution, or else we're going to hell.
Saying, no second on that motion. We'll have to consider that at some other time. That concludes the general public comment for this meeting. Do we have any items to, for posting and referral?
Yes, council has motions for posting and referral.
We'll go ahead and post and refer those as well.
That clears the desk.
That clears the desk. And do we have any announcements?
Not announcements.
Announcements? No announcements? If I can have everybody please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sean Blunt passed away from cancer on August 10th. He was surrounded by his family at home. He was 48 years old. He was the father of Cameron and Corey Blunt and husband to his high school sweetheart, Kim Harrison Blunt. Sean Blunt was born on February 1st, 1966, in Los Angeles. He grew up in Pacoima, attended Pacoima Elementary, McClay Middle School, and San Fernando High School. He was a very talented athlete. In high school, he was on the track and field team, basketball and football teams. In 1983, he received all-city defensive back honors at San Fernando High School. He was very skilled on the football field. He received a scholarship as well academically to play at the University of Nevada at Las Vegas. In 1989, he graduated from UNLV and became a graduate assistant. A year later, he returned to his alma mater, San Fernando High School, as an assistant head coach, and then in 1993 became the head coach. He spent a total of 20 years at San Fernando High School. In 2012, he became an assistant coach at St. Genevieve's in Panorama City, where we celebrated his life in a mass this past Sunday. Sean Blunt had a tremendous impact on all the lives of the athletes and the youth that he coached. He played a big role in helping many athletes move on to college, not only to pay and play for college, but to get their college degrees. He was a very tremendous asset to the community, in particular to San Fernando High School. Many students looked up to him. He was a great role model, and he will be very, very missed. He was surrounded by his family as he passed, and we hope that he rests in peace. He will be celebrated, his life will be celebrated on August 22nd at noon at Calvary Baptist Church in Pacoima. He survived by his wife, Kim Harrison Blunt, and his two sons, Cameron and Corey.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Two adjourning motions today. One is for a Venice legend, a legend in skateboarding and surfing. Legendary skateboarder Jay Adams died Friday at age 53 of an apparent heart attack while on an extended surf vacation in Escondido, in Puerto Escondido, Mexico. He was born in 1961. Jay was known as the original seed of the sport of skateboarding and was considered one of the most influential skateboarders of all time. He was one of the edgy Z-Boys of the sport, featured in the widely acclaimed 2001 documentary Dogtown and Z-Boys, and was portrayed by Emile Hirsch in the 2005 film Lords of Dogtown. According to his friends, he skated with aggression, talent, and total disregard for what others were doing. He won several championships in skateboarding and in surfing, and was renowned for a, a style that was so fluid that he was nicknamed Pure Seed and even The Chosen One. He mostly shied away from big-money contests that arose from the sports. He didn't like the professionalization of skateboarding, and he really just did it for the pure love of it. He liked to stay close to the, the renegade roots of skateboarding. He did, over the course of his life, get in some trouble with the law here and there, struggled as many from that era in Venice did with... Struggled, as many from that era in Venice did, with substance abuse and addiction. But he died sober, reading the Bible every morning. He was absolutely legendary in Venice. If you, not just in skateboarding, but in surfing, if you're someone who surfs or you have seen surfers out there, they are the sole siblings of Jay Adams. All those folks out here in Los Angeles skateboarding, in our skate parks, in our streets, in legal places and in illegal places, are sort of the children of Jay Adams. He is the father of, of skateboarding in Los Angeles. He will be memorialized in a typical surfer tribute in Venice at the end of the month. I'll have details later, but after the fundraising is done to get his body back from Mexico, there will be a memorial service on the beach near the Venice Pier, followed by a traditional paddle out. I expect hundreds will be attending because he really was an icon of an era and, and an atmosphere in Venice that has, that has since changed and passed a lot. I'd also like us to adjourn today in memory of James Wickham, the brother of the CLA's John Wickham. James was an employee of DOT, John's younger brother. He passed away Friday, August 15th, at the age of 46. He was born in 1968 here in L.A. and raised in Atwater Village. After attending local schools, he began his work-life installing exhibits at trade shows and conventions at the L.A. Convention Center. For nearly 20 years, he worked in exhibit halls across Southern California before returning to school to receive training and certification as an electrician. He quickly obtained a position with the Department of Transportation as a signal electrician based in the Rammer Yard. He serviced and installed traffic signals throughout the valley. Despite his best efforts to be known as James or Jim, he was Jimmy to the guys in the Rammer Yard, as well as to his old friends from Atwater Village. Following an extended illness, Jim passed away on Friday. He's survived by his wife, Kim, his children, Justin and Megan, his sister Carrie, and his brother John. May he rest in peace.
All, all members on that as well. Mr. Gakkorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that the city council adjourn this meeting in memory of Maestro Sebu Abkarian, the artistic director and conductor of the Kohar Symphony Orchestra and Choir, who passed away at his home in Cypress on Monday. Maestro Abkarian was known throughout the world as a composer, conductor, singer, painter, and educator. He founded the Armenian radio program at the Cypress Broadcasting Corporation and, and served there for 46 years. He performed throughout the world as an opera singer and was also the composer of many songs and other musical works that were performed by orchestras in Tokyo, Paris, Cypress, Beirut, and throughout the United States. His work and his performances with the Kohar Symphony Orchestra were seen by many as one of the greatest contributions to Armenian culture globally in the last decade. It often fused the traditional with the modern, and he certainly left an extraordinary legacy of, of great work. It's with sadness that we say farewell, but we also say bravo for a lifetime of cultural achievements that will serve as a long-lasting legacy to Maestro Abkarian.
Yes, Mr. LaBanche.
Members, this is a man who lived a great, long life. Don Pardo, who was the announcer for NBC, started in 1944 in radio and then through the television era. I first heard him on Jeopardy!, when I used to watch Jeopardy! when Art Fleming was on it, and then later on, Saturday Night Live. But there's nothing like a voice, and there's nothing like a life. And for 96 years he lived. God bless Don Pardo. May he rest in peace and welcome us all one day.
Yes, thank you. Seeing no others, I have one. And it's with great sadness that we adjourn in memory of Eileen Adelstein, the wife of Wayne Adelstein, president and CEO of the North Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce, who many of us have worked with for many years. Eileen passed away very unexpectedly from a heart attack last Wednesday on August 13th. She was a very kind person who led a quiet life, taking care of her family and adoring her grandchild. She spent most of her hours trying to spend time with those she loved most, and her family. Services were held this past Sunday at Mount Sinai in Simi Valley and was attended by a family and friends along with a lot of community members. True to her humble and compassionate nature, in lieu of flowers, attendees were actually asked to make a donation to the American Cancer Society. Our heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Adelstein family, to Wayne and his extended family, of course. He's been a dear friend, and his family have been instrumental in helping to focus on the San Fernando Valley in causes and businesses and philanthropic activities throughout the valley. May she rest in peace. With that, we, we also have one announcement. Councilman Price. Thank you.
The events in Ferguson, Missouri, have once again focused national attention on the use of force and transparency in our government. In fact, in our community, two days after the Michael Brown, Michael Brown was killed, Ezekiel Ford of South LA was killed after a traffic stop and a struggle with, with an officer from the Newton Division. In both situations, there's been a loud and understandable calls for, in the community, for information about the facts, about the incident, and transparency in how this case is going to be resolved. Tonight in South LA, I'm proud to announce at Paradise Baptist Church that there's going to be a community meeting, a dialogue between the police and the community. I think one thing we've learned from the civil unrest in this city in '65 and then later in '93, communication is vitally important. I certainly appreciate the restraint exercised by those who are frustrated by police actions which result in the death of young black men. And I also appreciate the ongoing efforts of the police to protect and serve with respect and transparency. If relations between the police and our community are going to improve, we must communicate effectively. And so in District 9 tonight, that communication continues so that we can make this city, to help this city move forward in a positive direction. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, well said. Thank you. And that concludes the meeting. We are adjourned. Be safe. Thank you.